Hello, good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the meeting to order. I'd like to ask that we all recall, please.
Lou.
Here.
Bosman.
Here.
Disharum.
Here.
Posthausser.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Ree.
Here.
Zawin.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to ask that we all please stand for the floor.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to ask for motion to open the meeting to public hearings for the FY-16 amended budget.
We move to open the meeting to the public hearing for the FY-16 amended budget.
A second.
Thank you, Paul, thank you, Teresa. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Lou.
Aye.
Bosman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Posthausser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Motion carrying. Mrs. Beverley, would you want to present information regarding the amended budget?
And this will be the quickest budget hearing you guys have ever seen. It's probably an honor to see again. This is just for the FY-16 amended budget that we have to do for the state, to meet the state requirements. If, and Renata, if you'll switch it to the next slide. This is the state form, and it just shows the revenues and the expenses, and then bottom, at the bottom line, it shows how we're still balanced, just like we were at the beginning. If you go to the next one, it shows changes that were made that we have to do for the state. Some salary, at the request of the auditor, he had us change salary line items, like to move them into business services or into curriculum, those types of things. And that's, so no amount changes, just a line item change, but we had to do it for the budget. And then the building fund, the only thing that we did was put the $300,000 of revenue in the building fund, and to show that that $300,000 for the middle school modulars came out of the working cash flow. Those are the changes that were made, and that's what we have to do, and to submit it back to the state. So, that's where we're at. Do you guys have any questions, or anything else?
No questions. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone who'd like to address the board regarding the FY-16 amended budget? No one? Okay. See, no one. I ask for motion to close the public hearing, and note that no one addressed the board.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Brian, thank you, Cheryl. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bosman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Posthausser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into public participation portion of the meeting, and Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our June meeting. It's hard to believe we've been out of school almost a month, so an early start to the summer this year. We're gonna start with our safety minute, and just need to make sure that we have volunteers willing to call 911, first aid responders, and anyone who is certified in CPR. If you could raise your hand, thank you very much. Our exits are off to our left and to our right, and our AD machine is in our main hallway to the right if needed. I didn't do the typical enrollment graph tonight because it's June, and our enrollment fluctuates quite a bit during the months of June and July, but I'll just let the board and everyone know that our enrollment tends, looks to be very steady, based on just the enrollment packets that were returned. I don't anticipate a drop in our enrollment. I would anticipate it would either be the same or will be growing, so based on just the current students that have enrolled. A lot will be determined in the next six weeks. Wanted to give a brief update on some of our summer projects, and especially since Mr. Graham's here with us tonight. We're working on replacing our bleachers out at the high school. If you pull up, the bleachers have been removed, and that project is, will be finished from what I believe ahead of schedule. Is that still accurate? Good? All right. If the weather continues to cooperate, we also have a very large roofing project going on here at the high school to take care of some of the rain issues that we've had, and the water getting in the building, and that project also continues to go very well with our warm weather. The modular classrooms that we had donated to the district are set to arrive, I believe, once that arrives today, I hope. And that work will also be completed in time for us to use those rooms for students in August, and it looks like we're definitely gonna need those at the middle school. We have several drainage projects going on throughout the district, and I would say that's the bulk of what's going on from a building perspective, otherwise, other than getting our, just our general rooms ready. Continuing to work on our strategic plan, with the board approved. We have our instructional leadership teams and our department leadership teams that are all meeting this summer, continue working on their own plans on a page, and those will be presented to the board here in September, October. Next month, we will have a focus on athletics, as Mr. Kreider and his team will present a yearly review of the athletic programs, as well as provide us some updates on our newly formed athletic leadership team. So, we're looking forward to that. I know that team's met several times, and looking forward of their report. There's some special guests with us tonight, some students, which we're always happy when we have students that get to come to the board meeting, because that's what we're all about, and our decisions are always based on what's best for the students. And so, Mr. Welsh, I will turn that over to you on exciting opportunity that our kids had.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to introduce this evening five of the same Dunlap High School sophomores. As many of you know, each year Dunlap High School sends sophomores to the HOBE leadership program. HOBE is an acronym that stands for Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership. Hugh O'Brien was, is a former actor, and he started the program back in 1958. The mission of his organization is to inspire and develop our global community of youth volunteers to a life dedicated to leadership, service, innovation, with the defined core values of volunteerism, integrity, excellence, diversity, and community partnership. You may remember last year I introduced Ronald Ackman. Ronald was HOBE attendee as well. He was especially recognized as a regional ambassador for HOBE in Chicago. Just an update on Ronald, Ronald currently is senior. After being chosen as an ambassador from our region, when I last year, he is a member of our student counseling. He was a member of our very own strategic plan initiative where he used those leadership skills for all our benefit throughout the community. This year, it's my pleasure to introduce five Dunlap High School sophomores who attended the leadership conference. Sisters Julia and Bruna Tavares, who are Renata's daughters. We also have another group of sisters, Ayah and Huda Aldada, and they will speak briefly tonight. Their fathers are in attendance as well. Monsir Aldada is here, and also, our fifth member is Franny Virville. Each of them will speak briefly about their experiences here.
Hi, everyone, I'm Julia. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I feel like it's really hard to put into words how much I changed, how much I learned in just four days. Starting off, I feel like they started off in all the whole program, everything I thought I knew about leadership, about myself. After that, we got into groups, and you just build friendships and bonds that I know will last a lifetime. I know everyone there has headed to great places, and it's really hard to put into words how grateful I am and how wonderful the experience was. The girls will talk more about it, but I would like to say thank you so much for giving us this opportunity.
Hi, guys, I'm Bruna. So, I've been to a lot of leadership conferences in the past few years, if you just ask my mom, she knows. But, um, this one, like, all of them claim that they're really life-changing, and you're all gonna walk away, you're all gonna be different people. And you always walk away with a lot of knowledge, but this one was actually life-changing. There's just something different about it that actually changes you as a person and as a leader. And we all learned so much, and we built so many different relationships that we're gonna take back, and we're all gonna apply all the skills that we learned that will always be ingrained with us into our community and into our schools, so we're really excited about it, so thank you all so much.
Hello, I'm Franny Virville, and taking the skills that Julia and Bruna talked about, we kind of translated them at the end of the camp into a leadership program called Alex's Lemonade Stand. It's a volunteer program that we helped out while we were there. And also, we, main focus of the camp was to try and kind of like take the skills that we were about to learn and hopefully strengthen, and use them to better our communities. And I hope that I can definitely use those skills as throughout the summer and through the rest of my high school career to help better Dunlap, as well as like, like our community, I guess. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ayah. I'm usually a shy person, but something about the people there and the friendships we made was amazing, and everyone was so loving and positive, and you could just walk up to someone and just have like a full, like, two-hour conversation with them. And it was honestly the best experience of my life, and I would do anything to go back, and it was just amazing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruna. So, overall, after just four days, we all were positively influenced by the camp so much. I know we're definitely all going back next year to, just like Ronald did this year. And we hope, I know we're all gonna use our leadership skills that we gained and put it for our volunteer work this summer and to help the community, Dunlap High School. And I just wanna thank everybody, my parents, for listening, and hope you guys have a good rest of your day. Thank you.
I want to thank you on behalf of the faculty to let us introduce these students. I think one of the best parts of this program is we do it sophomore year. We're gonna have these young lights for the next two years, and they're gonna definitely make an impact here at Dunlap High School and our community. So, thank you very much.
Next, we have a new member of our administrative team, and I would ask Mr. Jefferson to come forward and introduce as a new assistant.
All right, well, I don't know how we can top that. But it is my pleasure to introduce Marcus Beledin. Marcus has spent the last six years at Buscat, and he already is both a teacher and administrator. He will be splitting his time next year between Hickory Row and Ridgeview, so very exciting to have him on board.
Welcome to Marcus. Happy to have you. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Okay, we're now going to have public participation, so I think we already have a few people signed in, so we are definitely gonna have some people that wanna address the board this evening. So, if you wanna please stand if you have not signed in already, and please give your name to Renata and sign in. And then I'm just gonna read a couple comments for everyone that's gonna be addressing the board. Before addressing the board, I would like to remind you of our process. Per Board Policy 2230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself and respect sensibility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board if accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality, complaints against individuals, staff members, or board members, either named or unnamed, should not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaint should be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education Secretary. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who has not signed in, please do so, and then you each may start going to the podium. And please speak into the microphone and state your name when you're addressing the board.
Maybe Renata can just call him off. One more.
Does it matter if I represent or if he wants to speak first? If he wants to speak first, I don't think there's a problem.
Hi, my name's Rodney Richmond. I live at 809 North Second Street in Chillicothe. I'm a full-time custodian, a day position at Wilder Way. I'm here regarding the 2015, 2016, no, 2016, 2017 guidelines. I had gotten an email, and it contradicted what I thought I was working toward the last couple of years. I've run the district since December of 2012. I was a part-time sub-custodian, did that for a little over a year, and got called to Wilder Way to help him in a little bit of a jam, and I officially got hired full-time with Wilder Way, May 12th of 2014. At the time, I thought I was working in the year one, year two, year three wage guidelines as far as salary is concerned, and that's what I've been working toward for two years. I just recently found out in the email that they all got about the wage increase for the year. It wasn't what I expected for two years, the last two years. It's something I've been building my life toward, working around for personal financial reasons. And, you know, to get that email a few weeks ago was just not what I was expecting. So, I questioned that, and I assume it's, was told that it's going to close session later, but to have some of my staff here to support me is very overwhelming. But I want you to know that, I mean, we're a family over there, it's a great team. They'd be the world to me, and I don't do what I do on a daily basis for the paycheck. I really don't. I love what I'm doing for the first time since I was in the Navy. I love what I'm doing, day in and day out. And I told someone one time, I wish I'd done this 20 years ago. I was told it wasn't meant to be 20 years ago, so I'm here now for the reason. So, that's basically what I'm here for. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sue Krutz, I teach at Wilder Way, and I'm just here to speak to the quality of maintenance custodial work that we have at our school right now. Rodney actually didn't ask any of us to come, but I think one person just heard he was gonna be speaking, and within probably half a day, had kind of a small army of people who wanted to speak to support him. In my time at Wilder Way, I've been there for four different custodial key staff people. I've met two, Norm, who's probably before any of you were here, who's with us, and Larry and Josh, and of course Rodney. I was on the interview committee with, for Rodney, and we had seen him as a substitute custodian in the building, and had just been so impressed with what we saw. And when we interviewed him as a team, we just all agreed that we still saw the same qualities in him. And he said, and I said, we wanted to hire him. I remember about immediately after that, I said to him, which probably wasn't my place, but I said, I think I pointed my finger, don't let us down. Give it, give to us what you told us you were in there, and he said, I absolutely will. And I just can't tell you the change in our school with him there. Prior to, to that, we had a number of years with pretty high-level dysfunction in meetings. Really had an effect on morale in our building many, many times. A number of things, you know, that are going to now, but with Rodney's addition to our staff, it is amazing the change in morale. Now, he's been there for however long, we still, I mean, literally almost pinch ourselves sometimes and say, do you remember what it used to be like and how lucky we are now? And Rodney asks you, if you need something done, it gets done immediately. So, what he does for the building is great, but more importantly, what he does for the kids. I've never seen a custodial person who is so connected with the kids. My classroom is right above where the kids get dropped off by Hartful's in the morning. And Rodney knows each kid individually and speaks to them, and you hear him saying, your brains look adorable. Oh, Cubs, did your team win last night? And he speaks to every kid individually and starts their day out on such a positive note. So, I just wanted to speak to support of what a critical role I think he plays for, for our school, and how appreciative we are to have the level of quality that he gives us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Phyllis Brecklin, I teach second grade at Wilder Way, and I'd like to make sure to be enough here on you big tall people, because you give me a room full of 25 second graders, and I am awesome.
You are sitting.
That doesn't really help me, but thank you. All right, so, I don't know if you're aware of this, but secretaries and custodians are two of the most important positions that are in school. They know everything's going on. Foal, instead, and Rodney Richmond are no exception. They anticipate the need, they take care of it before it's a problem, they help revive an atmosphere of professionalism and trust within our building, and we love them. Rodney Richmond, when you hired Rodney, you were looking to fill an open position. Although that is true, I don't believe that you understand the impact that Rodney has made at our school. He took this job in a dusty hair, knowing he would be earning significantly less than other custodians in the district. He took this job with the understanding that this pay would increase to become as equal to the other custodians, which would be the best thing to do, because that would be life-changing for him. However, please take this into great consideration in the job and relationships that Rodney has cultivated. Kids love him. He's a role model for these kids. Some of these kids don't have any males in their life. He takes an interest in them, he knows them each by name, every kid. When he meets them at the car, when it's raining, he has the umbrella, it's like they're a personal ballet. You don't have, you don't, you just don't even know what he does. For our PTO, he brought in his own grill on his own time, and cooked a dinner for the PTO, and then the teachers all brought in side dishes. But this is what Rodney did, nobody told him to do it. All these other things, he came in at Christmas time, when he was off. We had a truck with our heater, he gave him work for no pay. He didn't expect it. Also, another thing he did, we have these two beautiful planters that are in front of our school. They say, Wilder Way, they're beautiful. Once again, a holiday time, Rodney took his own time, his own money. He went to Chillicothe to the nursery, brought back this beautiful greenery with bows and everything, and he put it there. This is not somebody who's working for a job, this is a career. This is a, this is a gift of love that he's given to us. What he does for the teachers is above and beyond. He takes care of things before we barely have a moment to say it out of our mouths. He does a big smile on his face, and what else can I do for you? All the time. With the parents, they adore him. He is professional, but he is friendly. He knows them all, he knows them by their name, they know him. And for the children, you just don't even know what that line is like. For our big fundraiser, our Spook Spectacular, we had a big fundraiser. One of our most popular silent auction items was me with Mr. Richmond, David custodian. You can't even know the fight for those kids and their parents. It was that, okay, one of the kids was their parents, because they're the ones with cash. Going back and forth, back and forth, and forth, I mean, this was huge. And some of the kids who have some issues in the classroom, they just need that little push. Their reward is Rodney Richmond. They can read to him, they can walk with him, they can push a balloon with him. He gives them a little tool belt, he gives them a little hat, he takes care of, my little boy in my class, who got a really bad earache, really bad. He didn't want to come to school. And Rodney bought him a hat, brought him to school. And we don't allow hats, we have exceptions. This kid didn't want to come to school, and Rodney's his best man. So, I mean, I'm just talking, he's making a difference. So, when you look at secretaries and custodians, they typically are being the least. I know we're not supposed to talk about money, but I'm telling you what, we have two best at Wilder Way. We've gone through a lot of change, gone through a lot of change. I understand that people think survival of the fittest is for the strongest people, it's not. It's for those who do best to change and make it work. We've done that above and beyond. This man right here has helped me in a part of that, he's our family. I'm sorry, but when your family just stuck up for each other, once a while we had, always a while we have.
Good evening, my name is Beth Kreider-Gary. I am your regional superintendent for Peoria County, but more importantly tonight, I'm a mom of three of your high schoolers. Well, one that used to be one of your high schoolers. I'm very nervous too, but for a totally different reason. As a 45-year lifelong resident of Dunlap, and as a child of an administrator from Dunlap, I know what it's like to have a parent as an administrator, and so I kind of, when it comes to Dunlap, just being really honest, is I kind of take a backseat and let my kids kind of do their own thing. Plus, I have not a lot to offer them. So, but something really important motivated me to be here tonight, and I just wanted to come be your biggest cheerleader and your biggest support, but I think you can hear my voice, I'm like really nervous. I talk to everybody all the time, but this is my home, this is my place. And I want to start first with a little bit of gratitude. I just got done with college orientation. My kid could not be more prepared to go. She was flying through the weekend, didn't want me anywhere around. And just what she was able to do on the ACT and how academically prepared, just thank you. My youngest, uh, next youngest is at ICC this summer. My third one's going to work with her mom over the summer, giving of her time, and I really can't wait for you to get ahold of my fourth one, because he needs you as well. So, just thank you, I wanted to start with that. Why I'm here is your consideration of the one-to-one device implementation. It's so much more to me than whether or not we can put something in kids' hands. The reason I am here is for, I am a digital immigrant, I know how to use this functionally. I have a computer at work, I have a computer that I use at home. But I was a kindergarten teacher for 17 years, and now all of a sudden, I live with all of these natives. My three high school girls are digital natives, and what they do is just unbelievable to me. They think differently than me. My Dunlap High School graduation in 1989 was much more like my father's generation than anything like what my daughters are going through. I, quite frankly, will never be able to understand it. So, in that context, I go up to a conference called the ICE Conference, Illinois Computing Educators, if you've never heard of them, big, huge conference in St. Charles. Honestly, full disclosure, mostly populated by districts north of I-80, but they're having conversations like this. They're on their fifth generation of devices. Take the time to think about that, their fifth generation, and they're not using a device a year, so they've been at this for maybe a decade, and our kids are competing with that. And they're having different kinds of conversations. They're not talking about should we or should we not, they're talking about transformation. They're talking about, they're beyond substitution, they're beyond putting a smart board in every room. They're talking about having makerspaces in every classroom. A maker space where kids are hands-on, project approach, doing things like building robots in kindergarten. And I'm sitting there as the Peoria County Regional Superintendent, knowing there's a lot of consideration in this county right now for one-to-one device supplementation going. I honestly had this jolt of, I don't know, it's, it was one of those church moments, like conviction, like coming to Jesus kind of things, where I realized, I have got to get out in front of this. So, superintendents come together for a meeting with the regional office, and we call a curriculum steering committee, and I kind of threw it out to them, I said, you guys, my God, I just went to this conference, what's going on out there? Tell me more. We have Princeville, who's had one-to-one device implementation for quite a few years now. Quite a few of the limestone feeders are going to one-to-one device implementation. And so, I said, you know what, darn it, I'm gonna issue a challenge. So, that's partially why I'm here too, is just cheerlead you and support you, whether you do one-to-one device implementation or not, is to embrace that technology, not for technology's sake, but because it transforms teaching and learning when it's done the right way. We should be having conversations with our teachers about how to use it, and how to not just have it be a new kind of chalkboard up front, or a new way for kids to read something on a flat screen. It's about project-based work, it's about talking to one another, it's about doing things. And our businesses keep coming to me saying, we need team builders, we need kids that can work in a project-based fashion. So, I issue this challenge, and I'll conclude with this. We're going to be hosting a Google Palooza on the Friday before Labor Day for the Peoria County Schools. Right now, it's mostly Peoria Public and Dunlap, because you have a lot of your own robust professional development. This is for a lot of the other districts that need to cooperate together on this. We have Google coming in, National Google, we have CDW, which you've, you know, probably, sure, most of you know who they are, Charles Markley's like their national spokesperson, are sponsoring for, and for us, paying for the whole thing, and we're modeling in after. Chicago Public has done it for two years now, where teachers just come, and for two days, they are just inundated with the Google apps for education and how it can transform teaching and learning. So, some of your teachers, I pay for their subs to come, and you've got some real people out front with us that could maybe come present, and if you have a few that just want to come see what we're doing. But I would issue that challenge. We have 21st century learners that we have no idea what kind of jobs we're preparing them for, none. And I would just encourage you to think about that when you are looking at your technology plan as a whole, when you're thinking about your one-to-one device implementation. I'm sorry, my voice was really shaky, but as you can tell, this is something I am very passionate about, and I'm considering doing my doctoral thesis on it. I am so just moved by the way that I see kids can take technology and transform the way we interact and we learn from each other. So, just thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I'm Shawna Segler, I teach at Dunlap Middle. I'm actually reading a letter from Nicole Lozier. She wanted to be here tonight but could not, she's out of town. So, she sent me a letter and asked if I could read it for her. It is also about the one-to-one initiative. Unfortunately, I am out of town with my family, but wanted to be able to speak to you in regards to the one-to-one initiative. I know many of you were able to hear about all of the amazing things that I was able to witness in experience with my students in a few short months, but for those of you who weren't, I wanted to be able to say a few more thanks. There were some concerns or questions raised about screen time, as well as research in schools, but I'm implementing this. I've thought a lot about the second semester of my teaching while being part of the pilot program, and these never once changed my beliefs, philosophies, or best practices as a teacher. What I was, teaching never changed. My responsibility is to teach to the standards, our Atlas Maps, and our Plan on the Page. As part of the Strategic Planning Committee, we work on a mission to grow our kids to their greatest potential. I could go on and on about the opportunities that the devices have opened up for students at all levels. Please, as a parent of a child who was part of the pilot and a teacher at the pilot, let's make decisions in line with our mission, vision, and goals. Let's continue to trust our administration to hire amazing teachers who teach to the standards and implement the best teaching practices around and not worry about test scores or screen time, because at the end of the day, teachers at Dunlap do what's best for the kids. Will there be those few and far between situations where a device may not be used to its potential or a child or two who may not follow a direction or get an app that's not part of the curriculum? Sure, but again, those awesome teachers that are part of this will address it, ask for help, or be given the professional development necessary, just like always. Test scores won't drop because of devices. Test scores could drop based on a group of kiddos, missing some standards at a specific level, or this transition between the level of rigor on ISAP versus PAR. But again, best practices and our mission as a district will guide us through this. We can't be afraid to take leaps because of a score, there are too many variables. Long-term, that score will not follow them into lifelong learners, but those devices could provide opportunities for all kids that will follow them into college, the working world, and as lifelong learners. I would also like to end with a quick story. I had a kiddo this year who had a hard time communicating with his classmates, not because of academics or a disability. He never wanted to go to recess, Sundays, et cetera, he wanted to be on a device. If someone had been a fly on the wall, I'm sure I would have been asked all sorts of questions. At that time, he was on a device while the other kids were socializing, playing hit balls, or whatnot. I was there with him eating my lunch, working, et cetera, and we were able to build a relationship and discuss things that bothered him. I can help guide him and give him suggestions in an environment that was safe for him. He could hide, he had his Chromebook, but if you were that fly, you would have seen guidance, direction, and social support, which you would not have seen in the data. This is just one small story of a kid whose test scores are off the charts, using his device for games, school-appropriate of course, but creating an environment for positive dialogue as well. Please consider this initiative and the impact it can have on the whole district, as opposed to the small percentage of worries, risks, and objectives. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry I was not able to support the committee and teachers who were there tonight. Feel free to call me, contact me, or even speak to a group of my kids from my room. Nicole Lozier, and she asked me to give you a copy of this as well.
Thank you.
Hannah? Good evening, my name is Hannah Betten, and I have taught fourth grade at Anon and Heath with past eight years. And I'm also here to speak to the one-to-one initiative tonight, um, as I was one of the pilot teachers in the program. And I'm glad I'm not one of the only teachers that gets to have to talk in front of adults. I don't mind if I read you some of my thoughts that I have right now. Um, but I have, I just want to share with you some information about my experience with the pilot program that may address some of the concerns or some of the questions that you have about the program or what the devices were used in the classroom. Um, the topic of increased student achievement often comes up when considering going one-to-one. And I've done a lot of research on how one-to-one relates to increased student achievement. And what I've come across is that increased student achievement is not obtained when devices are used simply at the substitution level. But when curriculum has been modified and redefined, that's when increased student achievement happens. Now, this is a slow process, going from substitution to redefinition of curriculum. And my personal experience matched these findings. At first, we did use the devices as a simple substitution, that's how you get to know the devices. Instead of taking a pen, a pencil, you do it on the device, and that's a substitution. But as my students and I became more comfortable with the devices, I became, I began looking at our curriculum in a different way and was looking for ways that I could enhance the curriculum using these devices, and that's what happened. We did an Explorer Day project where the students submitted a proposal to me where they wanted to celebrate a different explorer other than Columbus, and they used these devices to do research and to put together presentations for their peers. And they do know better than I could have ever imagined. Um, we used the devices for a graphic project within our math unit. We couldn't have done without these devices in our classroom. So, in a pilot program that went from February to May, we didn't really put in place any measures to see if student achievement was a result, because that was not the purpose of our pilot. Test scores were not the end goal. Enhanced learning opportunities were, and that's what I saw within my classroom. Students had greater opportunities that they wouldn't have had without these devices. However, I did take a look at my student achievement, just to see if there were any effects on it. And I did look at our STAR reading assessment, which is our one-year-long assessment that the students do. They take it in the fall, winter, and the spring. And it measures not only their achievement, but more importantly, their growth that they've attained throughout the year. And my pilot students not only showed growth, but they were at the higher end of the typical range of growth. I don't know if that's attributed to the devices being in there, but it's just a statistic to share with you. Another concern that arose during the pilot was a decline in student reading, as in reading of their actual physical books that are in front of them. As one may predict, when a nine-of-ten-year-old is given the choice of reading a book or having free time on a Chromebook, they're going to choose the free time on the Chromebook. But this is where best practices as a teacher comes in. My students had an expectation to read every day, a certain amount of time or a certain amount of pages. It was their goal that they set for themselves. If they did not meet their reading, their daily reading goal for their personal reading book, they did not have any Chromebook free time, which was five minutes in the morning and five minutes in the afternoon. Any other time spent on the Chromebook was not free time. It was typically engaged in reading, writing, or engaged in a task that related to our curriculum. And since often this time on those Chromebooks was reading, in my opinion, reading is reading, whether it's on physical book or on a device. And that kind of segues into the next concern that a lot of parents maybe had about this, was the amount of screen time. As a parent myself, I completely understand this as a serious concern when you're putting a device in front of a child. And I didn't take this lightly when implementing it with my students. In hindsight, I wish we had kept exact data on the amount of minutes that the students had, the devices in front of them. But if I were to give it an estimate, in the seven hours that the students are at school within a school day, in my classroom at least, they maybe had their devices open and in front of them anywhere from forty-five minutes to an hour, not at one chunk of time to spread out throughout the day. That was typical for my classroom. I can't speak to all the other classrooms, but that's what it looked like there. Much for day was it, was as it had always been, whole-class instruction, group learning, partner work, and hands-on learning. If those activities then segued into a device activity, they would. If they didn't, they didn't hold in the devices just for the sake of having them in the classroom. All in all, the one-to-one pilot is a positive experience in which I saw many benefits for the students, and any concerns that arose were running through thoughtful planning and putting in quality teaching practices. And I just wanted to share with you, um, one of my favorite moments of having the devices in the classroom was an unlikely pairing of students that came out of it. I had a little girl in my classroom that was very shy and didn't often come out of her shell, and she was a very, um, low-achieving student in all subject areas. However, she had a great interest in tornadoes, as it was tornado season this past spring. And she wanted to do a lot more research on these, yet she wasn't quite sure how to get started on these devices. Um, a student that sat next, sat next to her in her group, which was not a friend of hers, did not often talk to her. He was an enrichment student, and he knew all about the devices. He could teach me things about these devices. He volunteered to help her, and they ended up coming up with this great presentation that they shared with the rest of the class on their own time, on their own initiative. And that's kind of what I was leaning towards with the enhanced learning opportunities. Those two would not have been able to collaborate like they did without these devices in the classroom. So, I just thank you for your time and your consideration, and thank you for the decision.
Thank you.
All right, speaking of everybody, my name is Justin Hanson, and he's third grader Wild Way. And I know I signed up to talk about the one-to-one tonight, but I want to take a moment first and talk about Rod Richmond. He is definitely the most stand-up guy I've ever, ever met in my life. I had some medical things going on with me in May, where I was in and out of the building all the time. He texts me in the morning and said, "Hey, come in today, what can I do for you?" He'd literally meet me at the side door around my classroom and say, "Hey, that was pretty heavy, can I move that for you?" Can, you know, he knew I couldn't walk the whole way across the building. "Hey, you want me to take the kids down, the boys down to the restroom, because I'm pretty busy, you know?" And then he would let me kind of stay back, stay in the classroom, gather materials for lessons, and he just was my, literally my crutch that I needed to help me get through the rest of the year. So, I could go on and on about many things he volunteered for, PTO. He was in the dump tank with me for at least an hour. Um, lip sync, he helped out at the last second of the teacher performance. So the stuff he does, when he says, "What can I do?", it's not just that phrase you hear all the time, "Hey, how you doing?", where nobody expects anything in return as a response. He actually means it, he's sincere, and like I said, stand-up man, that's, he's the Webster's definition of that in my, uh, mind, for sure, so. All right, now for that piece, I just wanted to definitely take a moment and say that before we go into one-to-one. So like you know, um, I piloted two in my third grade classroom, um, starting in February. And the two things I want to talk about with the one-to-one that I want to hit on and talk to you all about tonight are enhanced learning and differentiated instruction. So I can see from a parent's perspective, how a teacher gets a bunch of Chromebooks in their classroom. Okay, they're going to take those textbooks, put them away, lock them, throw away the key, and they're just going to use these all the time. Definitely, that was not my situation. And every time we got together for the piloting group every couple of weeks or so, throughout the whole rest of the second semester, we talked about that. How to ease into our curriculum, how to possibly, sure, trade paper for a digital copy of something, but it wasn't like we were just giving up one to take on another. We were trying to find ways to embed it within our instruction that we already are doing. Um, we're keeping in accordance with Atlas and things like that. But yeah, we're trying to go a little less paper. Um, and for me in third grade, whenever you have a couple of students who have ADD or whatever the reason is, keeping track of multiple things on their desk, what I saw was them being able to keep track of tabs on their screen and easily scroll from tab to tab versus trying to manipulate several things going on. For example, like with PAR, and I don't want to talk about high-stakes tests too much, but hey, it's education, we got to speak about it a little bit. So for example, one of my lessons that I would do would be called a paired passage. So you'd have two passages about tornadoes, one could be fiction, one could be nonfiction, plus a graphic organizer. You got two sets of possibly staple passages, plus an organizer on a student's desk. The whole entire thing's pulled up. I would try and number it, one, two, and three, for those students who could keep track of it, like I did in the third grade, but still they would be confused. What I saw though, was I got ReadWorks, which is a totally free website teachers use all the time. I, you know, borrowed from other teachers' idea. And instead of three pieces of paper and packets on their desk, there'd be three tabs. And I walked through with them slowly, great having a smart board and showing them visually explicitly exactly how to do that. And then from there, they took off. So within three months or so, instead of me walking it through, I would gradually give them more release and let them kind of take over and take over ownership. So, speaking of reading, um, I think, to be honest, we might do it for a better order. So, another unit that I did a lot, um, February is I started doing Black History Month last year. So I got on Teachers Pay Teachers, other websites, found a bunch of paper to run off reams and reams and reams of paper. It's all good. But then, I got the Chromebooks, there's a whole world out there that I realized. And what I did, speaking of enhanced learning, is I got a website, and then I would use that as the paper plateau. But I would take that to a whole different level, because we have the ability to use Chromebooks. So, at any typical school, there's a computer lab, you know, it's a physical room, hooked up with computers, really warm, with all those boards and all that good stuff. Well, my classroom signed up for Fridays. So there were, and that was kind of the way it is, I'm sure the teachers could agree with this, sometimes you kind of buy your days until it's your day. Well, that wasn't the case, you wore Chromebooks. So instead of having that enrichment opportunity on Fridays, we could do it any day of the week. So that really opened up doors for teachers, the opportunities were endless. Um, and it was nice to see me just taking risks. I think teaching is about taking a lot of risks, and if you're not taking risks as a teacher, you're not doing it right. At least that's my mentality towards it. So, I would try things out each week, or I'd focus on this, and I'd focus on that. If it didn't work, all right, kick it to the curb, let's do something different. But throughout this experience, I found several different things that I thought were very, very helpful. And then with our PLCs each week, I would meet, talk with the two third-grade, uh, teachers that I work with. And we do have a few Chromebook carts in, in school, but we have to share them and things and let them try it. So by the end of the year, um, it, it felt like a pretty well-oiled machine. Um, and I, I was really looking forward to the opportunity to try and improve on that in the future. Um, I hope, but you know, that's, that's ultimately your decision. But, um, I think the piloting team is one that really, really wants to work as a group, not just among the pilot, but amongst everybody else too. So when we got more comfortable with the, with the Chromebooks and the one-to-one, we started to, you know, answer questions, started getting comfortable with it. So in April, we had an SID half-day where we would just work amongst our building staff. And then we got the opportunity to talk to everybody. Here's what it looks like. And then I think they felt like we did back in December, like, whoa, that's a lot going on right there. But we tried to ease some of, you know, some of their questions, show them the basics. And I would love the opportunity to teach others, other teachers. Because I could just feel it that day, sure, there was a little confusion going on, that's with anything new that you learn throughout your life. But it was also, we were being, we were really, really being aware, because you could feel in the room that things were changing, and it was a positive change. So I know this is exactly, nothing that I wrote down, um, but I don't want to go on and on, but differentiated instruction was an awesome thing too. So speaking of packets, instead of me saying, "All right, you guys get packet A, you guys get packet B, you get packet C", within Canvas, which is our online learning component that we got to use, uh, throughout our one-to-one pilot, I could individually assign passages to certain students. So they could see, student A could see what student B has or passage. So I'll get on ReadWorks once again, all they would know is they're reading about tornadoes. So they wouldn't know necessarily, sure, some of them would kind of compare and see if the pictures matched up or not, that's just how kids are. But at the end, we would have extension activities. Let's have a discussion, let's have an essay, you know, pair-type of writing activity. They all could contribute to whatever the extension activity was, because they all read about the same topic. Sure, it was at the wrong level, which I think education should differentiate as much as possible. So, instead of a teacher on a Sunday night running off copy after copy, figuring out which ones to tap throughout the week, I could get on there and in less time and without putting a carbon, you know, footprint on our environment, I definitely was, it was a lot very, much more seamless for me to do it, and it was very effective. And I think some of the students see, um, I saw a speaker named Dr. Daggett a few years ago. He came to Peoria, actually, and spoke at the Civic Center. He said one of the problems of education is that students see school as like a place where the dinosaurs ruled, where it's kind of like, oh, that's a school thing. They don't see the, they don't see the relevance to their actual life. What I saw with students is I saw students way more engaged. I think they saw it way more relevant, what they were learning in school, because sure, outside of school, they're on Chromebooks as well as, or iPads. And some of the stuff they could do, manipulating the tabs, was, was amazing. So I know that, you know, a couple of other speakers before me and other, I've heard other people speaking to about screen time, is that we definitely do our best to balance things out. So throughout the pilot, we filled out a Google Sheet. What did you work on today? What subject did you work on? So we filled that out every day, or maybe at the end of the week, and we have time in the weekend, fill it out, and then reflect and look back. So it was easy to see kind of what we worked on, what I've worked on. So I've worked on a lot of reading first, and to me, reading was, was it, it was awesome. It was way more effective, I think, teaching to read it that way than not. There are touchscreen Dell Chromebooks, have you ever seen one? I highly recommend checking them out if you haven't yet. You can zoom in and zoom out. So if a student has a disability with vision, oh, wrap it up.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I told you too much. Um, but for differentiation is awesome. And speaking of Google Docs, there's a speech-to-text feature. So a student who would literally go into Tigger's when I said, "All right, it's time to start writing", I gave him the headset with the headphone attachment, he would do his own thing. He cranked out two pages, the first time he ever had a chance to do that. So to me, that's the story of the one that really sticks out in my mind. Sorry to take up all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathy?
Hi, Kathy Dillis, I teach kindergarten at Wild Way, and I'm here to talk about Rod. I didn't know if I was supposed to cut in line and go with the rest, but you know, a teacher I can't cut, so. But I just wanted to make sure, I knew that the lessons would do a great job talking about Rod. He's outstanding, but I just wanted to make sure someone said the words "above and beyond", which they did, I didn't know they'd say that before I signed up, but "above and beyond", his job, I mean, we want for nothing, it takes care of us, it's unbelievable. I've had my own personal things, like, um, Justin was mentioning, where I need a little extra support, and there he is, and perfect, just, just more than you'd ever want. Um, no, that's not true, it's what you'd want, but you don't expect. Um, but also, I wanted to explain that at Wild Way, um, Stacy Berg has created this school culture where we're a school family, and we really are, and he's part of our family, and Nigel Berg is part of our family. Oh, I'm getting off, but, um... But, um, our school family, he is the brother, the friend, and he's an important part of our family. But our school family, he is the brother, the friend, and he's an important part to it. And all of the kids know it, all of the staff know it, and I just wanted to make sure that you all know it. Because we appreciate him, and we want to make sure you have that information that you all get, and show them how much we appreciate him. Appreciate him the right way. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teaching in their garden, I'm always thinking of her.
Hi, I'm Diane Maswell. We live at Dunlap, we have two children that attend schools here. And I talked to you guys all a little bit by email about some of my thoughts. And I wasn't really planning on talking, but I felt like, you know, after hearing everybody, I kind of wanted to give a parent's perspective. And I'd like to say first of all, I'm familiar with all the teachers that spoke for the most part, and they're all outstanding teachers. There's no question about that, they're excellent, and I really, you know, I really respect their comments and I really understand what it is they're trying to accomplish. And I respect that and I appreciate it. As a parent, I have maybe different goals for what I want for my kids here at a public school than maybe what they want. And I don't think that I'm just speaking for myself as a parent. What I want from a public school is I want them to learn building blocks. I want them to learn math, I want them to be proficient at math. The other day, I was in the car and I was talking on the phone, I was on the speaker, and I had one of my children with me. And I had to do some mathematical calculations in my head, I was prorating, I was prorating interest in my head. And my child looked at me and said, wow, mom, that's amazing, how did you do that? Well, you know, I learned that in school, and I'm not saying that they didn't learn. I'm not saying that they didn't do a good job. But I mean, I just feel like kids today, they are learning the building blocks that we learned at my age. And I also notice the teachers are like a lot younger than me, so that might be a little bit of, you know, there might be a little bit of a generational gap here. But I'm very concerned that we're going above and beyond, I think, what I would like to see from a public school. I know that there are some private schools that are doing this, but there aren't, there aren't a lot of public schools. The other thing is, I heard somebody speak about, I can't even repeat it, it was just words that are way up here. And if I wanted my child to grow up and be a Caterpillar executive, then I would completely agree that that's, you know, maybe what they should be doing at this level. But I don't think all kids are going to be on these tracks where they have to learn all of these really advanced ideas and advanced things. I think that we want our kids to be able to conceptualize things, to think logically. And that is where I feel like our kids are really falling behind. I don't see our kids, not just my kids, but kids in general, I don't see them thinking logically. And I think it's because of the screen time. And I think there's every parent that knows what I'm talking about when you try to address your kid, and they look at you very blankly because they've just been engaged in a screen. And I run into that a lot, and I'm very concerned, I'm very concerned about that. I think we have children that go to Dunlap schools that might not want to, that might not want to be prepared for the corporate world. Maybe they're going to go into the trades. Maybe they need to figure out in their heads, you know, if this is a 12-gallon gas tank, and how many ounces of... But I mean, I just feel like we're going to be getting away from the building blocks of logical thinking. And we're just going to continue the screen days that they're already in. Somebody said, oh, the kids, it's amazing how they can run through the tabs. Oh, it's amazing what my kid can do on a screen. It's like, I'm just, I don't think the kids today have any problems moving through a screen. I think you can give them any device and they can figure out in a heartbeat. And that's not really what I want my kids learning here at Dunlap. I don't want them learning how to manipulate a screen. I want them learning the building blocks of education. The other thing is, somebody said, oh, it's amazing the world that opens up when you have these Chromebooks. It's amazing the world that opens up when you take them to a library too. I mean, I have to drag our kids to the library, but when I do, they're amazed. And I think that that's a very similar thing that they might find on a Chromebook, they could also find in a library. Mrs. Gary and I, we have a mutual friend, her name is Hettie Elliott. And Hettie is the Director of the Adult Education. She teaches kids and helps them get their GED if they haven't been able to graduate from high school. She uses a pad of paper, a textbook, and some pencils, and some donated laptops. And she takes these kids and she graduates them after teachers from K through 12 haven't been able to do in the public schools. So I think my point in that regard is that we want great teachers. We don't necessarily want great devices. We want great teachers, we want great teachers teaching building blocks of success. I feel like there are a lot of parents that feel the same way I do. I'm a little disappointed that the teachers, and I could be wrong on this, I could completely be wrong. I don't remember ever getting anything asking for my input on this one-to-one. I know that it was, I know they're getting a lot of teachers' input. I don't, and I could be wrong, but I do not think the teachers were pulled on this. And then finally, I think I would just like to say that a lot of us met when we were, when we all became kind of jarred and aware of the budget problems that we had several years ago. And we, I remember there was a gymnasium that was completely filled with people. And we were all just shell-shocked, looking at each other, like, what just happened here? And I remember the anger from the parents, they said, why did you spend all this money? Why, it wasn't necessary, just give us good teachers and give us our fine arts. And I'm afraid this could be another one of those moments. That in a couple of years, if things get bad, if the situation with Caterpillar doesn't resolve, if the problems with the state continue to increase, I'm afraid we could be at the exact same situation that we were several years ago. We could all be looking at each other shell-shocked, we could be looking at the disruption of our fine arts, layoffs of teachers. You know, I just don't feel, I don't feel like we're far enough removed from our budget problems that we should be just jumping head in to the next very expensive project. Because if things fall through, which they very well could, and we're locked into this program, then that is going to mean that we're going to have to pay for it in other places where we don't want to pay for it because we're on the hook for this program. And we could have a whole nother moment, just like what we had several years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela Anderson, and I have a, my youngest daughter is a junior at Dunlap. And my oldest daughter graduated from Dunlap High two years ago. And I'm just, I'm kind of very shocked about this proposal because I don't remember as a stakeholder being asked for my opinion. I'm just wondering, where was the survey? Because at a cost of 2.3 million upfront and $400,000 every year after, I think you should ask. There are eight for sale signs on my street that just went up in the last month. Our biggest employer just laid off 10,000 people. You have no idea where your E A Bs are going to be in the future. Our state has no budget. These are very uncertain times. We just let so many teachers go a couple of years ago. And like Diane said, I'm afraid we're setting ourselves up for that again. Like I said before, my daughter graduated, my oldest daughter graduated from DHS two years ago. She's now a biology major at an Ivy League school that does not allow computers in the classroom. This is a school with a $20 billion endowment. They don't feel it's necessary, they feel it distracts from learning because when people multitask, they don't absorb the information as well. In fact, at her school, there is no smartboards. I didn't see one. In fact, I don't even see dry erase boards. It's good old-fashioned chalkboards. Most of these kids have computers at home anyway, and they are extremely pure-literate. Whether you decide yea or nay, because I do sincerely respect our teachers, and I thought there were some very good points made by them tonight. But whether you decide yea or nay, I think you should really send out a survey and hear from the voices of as many stakeholders as possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Okay, this will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move into information and discussion items. Board, the school activity reports were available in the package for your review. Are there any questions regarding the school activity reports? And information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of May is available in the package for review. Mr. Fryder is with us this evening, if you have any questions. The administration will have a short presentation on the key goals for the district, and that will be leading into the 2016-17 school year.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to just do a real quick run-through of our key things that we're working on at the district level. And so you'll recognize many of these things. Obviously, with our strategic plan being approved by our board in April, that drives everything that we work on in the district from here on out for the next five years. And so that's how we develop our goals at the district level. And these should be very familiar to the board. These are the goals that we set forward with me that need to be reported back to you in December, January timeframe. But obviously, student performance remains at the top of our list. The strategic plan, as I mentioned in my board update, or in the superintendent update, will have our instructional leadership teams, our building district-level teams. Everyone will have plan on the page and balanced scorecard items. You'll see, starting next month, you'll hear me reporting out on the balanced scorecard on different items. We just updated that and uploaded it under our website for all the targets that we had to finish for June. And then we'll do that again in November, so. Communication plan, we'll see a plan come out in the next couple of months. It'll be much more formalized, including some of the things we're already doing and then how we are looking to enhance communication going forward. Part of our new contract with the DEA, we have a new position for a media person. And I did meet with a teacher and that position's been filled. So you'll see a lot more videos of anything from possibly basketball games, musical performances, podcasts, things like that. So that'll all be part of that formalized communication plan. Hope to have that to the board here in the next month, maybe two months. Obviously, efficiencies, as you know, we mentioned within our talks tonight that we heard from people at the podium, we continue to look for ways to save money and so that, you know, just becomes or remains just as important as always. At-risk students, this was something that Mrs. Bond and I are working on together. It's one of her main focus areas, looking for ways to better identify our students who are at risk and what we can do to support those kids. District climate survey, that's upon, for approval tonight. Upon approval, I'll work with the admin team on how we're going to administer that survey and when and all the details. So, but the idea would be that the board would have those results back before November or December. Working at our hiring practices, just more formalizing, job postings, practices as far as interviews, making things more consistent within all of our buildings, training our staff, our admin team on different interview skills. And that's something that Mrs. Beverlin has spearheaded. And just the larger we get, the more we need to make those practices more diverse and more consistent. And facility plan, I'll have a three- to five-year facility plan for the board, hopefully at the September board meeting. And we have some ideas of how we plan to address our growth, but we'll wait for our enrollment in August and take a hard look at our projections going forward. But you'll see a lot of different scenarios in that plan, and that's something I've been working with the architects with in the last month. Just different scenarios on a lot of what-ifs, what if it drops, what if it stays the same, what if it increases, and what the administrative team will recommend, and we'll present that to the board going forward in the fall. That's all I'm doing.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit. And we'll turn it over to Karen.
Okay, so under my areas, one of the big things that we've been talking about is the implementation of the Dunlap Education Foundation. And I am happy to say we have our laws and our corporations. So we are, we're still working on some of the non-profit things that we're doing in general. But we officially exist, which is really exciting. So, and so you'll see that all out over the next year with our big kickoff and then being next spring, spring going into summer to kick that off. And then focusing on hiring and staff training that promotes, that promotes gap posting. That's what Lisa had talked about already, looking at where are we doing our job postings, where are we reaching out to some things we've already done. And getting, we used to post basically on K-12 education and Barbell Site. And now we're hoping to get listservs on four or five different colleges, universities, job posting lists, organization lists, district administration magazines, things like that, that go out nationwide. So that we're reaching more than just in our own area and then working with the administrators on the practices and the best ways to make sure that we're finding the most qualifying candidates for our school districts. Converting accounts payable practices to an electronic format, we have done that somewhat, but we'd like to move it further in advance and just further more. My goal will be to never buy another check. I don't know that I'll ever get that goal 100% accomplished, but that is my, that's my dream, that I never have to have a paper check. Implementing employee evaluations for all non-certified staff this year. We worked on creating the evaluations and we have them set, ready to go to roll out in August. We'll be going over the evaluation process with the non-certified employees at the Teachers Institute. And then next year, everyone will get an evaluation for their job performance, which will allow us to really know how everyone's doing and allow us to help our non-certified staff for just like our evaluations do for our teaching staff. And update the iVisions employee portal, allowing the use of electronic reimbursement and approval forms for the employees. Right now, we still do everything on paper as far as reimbursements go and red course requests and things like that. And we can, there's a little bit of a conversion we need to do with Infinite Visions. We're just kind of waiting to get staff able to do it that will allow us to do those things electronically and have everything stored electronically, save papers, save time, and all of those things. And then our goal is to get the school-based activity and interest accounts moved into the Infinite Visions software system. Right now, the schools, they are charging their activity and interest accounts, but they're kept usually in QuickBooks or just in Excel program that's born out into, and we'd like to move it into Infinite Visions. All the reports would be the same, and then it would be tracked in a central location. Makes it easier for the auditor, everybody involved. So those are, there's where we're at and what we're trying to get accomplished this year.
With that, the school-based activity accounts, there was some discussion months back about cash payments and trying to move away from cash payments for parents paying for activity.
Yes, it's not on here. Yes, and that's actually in the consent agenda tonight is doing online registration and being able to do online payments. That will be a huge, huge thing to the district in staff time as well as paper and direct costs and mailings and things like that. And it'll save parents, that's on the staff time, they don't have to pull out and form three times. Have your kids, they can pull it out once and count it over. So that's huge and just, so that's just one more thing that's not on that list, but we need to make sure of that.
Karen, you probably were going to address this maybe later, but can you talk a little bit about the budget process going forward?
The budget process is going forward, yes. Tonight, we're, we're going to give them the budget for 1516, and then later in the summer, we'll do the official budget for 1617. And the budget, I know it's a must-learn, I know you're going to do it.
You're good.
They were here three years ago as part of this whole process that, I mean, really, everybody sitting up there was part of, whether on the board or part of the community. And nobody wants to be back to where we were back in 2013. And we've all learned from where we were and the practices that have been changed and the processes that have been put in place. I can't tell you that... I can't tell you that the economy won't drop out of the law, I mean, I can't tell you that that won't happen, what I can tell you is that we are all, that I as the businessperson and the administrators and the board and everyone are working together to make sure that we see it coming and that we're not making decisions that will cause us to have to lay off teachers because we're buying devices. There is, there's, I think, I think in the last few years, guys have learned about me to know, I don't just want to spend money to spend money and we spend it where we need it and if we get to a point where EAB drops or the EAB drops or the state cuts funding and things like that, we are at a point with one-on-one or anything else that we're committed year after year after year. It's a framework for one-on-one technology to move the district forward, to take us to the next step for our 21st century learners, but it's not a commitment that we have to make year after year, that we can't stop if for some reason the financial situation of the district changes. So those are all things that we've, we've talked about and we're looking at and making sure that we're making decisions that are best for kids, but also looking at the stability of the district as well as from taxpayer and everybody else, so from the financial side, that's kind of where we are. And as we move forward with the budget, the budget is, budget is balanced. There is, and Brian and I actually talked a little bit about this today, and there's, the budget looks balanced on the state for at zero, like everything we're bringing in, every, is, everything that we're going to spend. Part of that is because of the way the state operates and what you have to do in order to be able to change money in the budget. And if you don't have the money in the actual budget, then you have to go basically through a two, three-month process to be able to run daily operations of the district. So there's money in that budget that's not necessarily sitting out there that's going to be spent unless we have to spend it because we need another B for special education or something happens with another student, we need something for an IDP or something happens that is unforeseen, but having it in the budget and it balanced at zero allows us to do that, to be able to act as we need to rather than having them being bogged down in a bureaucratic process. And the board could be willing to be three days in a row and make some, you know, to do the actions that have to happen, but that's, they can't even do that because it has to be posted for so long and things like that, so I just want everybody to know that we are, we are in a very, we are in a very good spot. Obviously, all state funding gets.
And we want to try to increase our surpluses somewhat if we can on an annual basis or run it somewhat positive and keep building that.
It's been going up your reserves.
So.
Yes, and it's been going up every year and so the goal is to increase the reserves in all of the funds, not just the education fund, but the building fund, the transformation fund, all of those, so that we have that ability to react to whatever we, when something happens to it, that we don't have control of. And so we're in a really good spot, but I just want everybody to know that's where we're looking at and even this year, we're gonna, it's balanced on paper, but we're going to have some extra, we're, we're going to hold money over this year. We will, we will not spend as much money as we budgeted, so there will be.
About how much?
The reserves will grow. And Karen, I don't know exactly, it's right around five percent, three to five percent of the budget that will roll that we didn't use.
Okay.
And then honestly, that's the goal, to have the budget somewhere between, that we spend ninety to ninety-five percent of the budget, that shows that you've got enough there for cushion, to make sure you can do your daily operations if something other thing happens, but then you're not over budgeting and burdening the taxpayers by having too much money sitting out there, so.
Can I just ask a question? Because the one-to-one, there's, it's 2.3 million initially, which I know comes out of a different fund than the teachers', but it's 400,000 per year that you're comfortable with. Can we use that money to redact the teachers' wheel like that?
Can we just await and address any one-to-one stuff during the one-to-one action?
We are gonna have a discussion.
That'd be okay?
Yeah, action, we'll have a discussion and then we'll try to make sure that gets addressed.
Yeah.
So Karen, did you have anything else?
I said the.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
And obviously, Mrs. Bowman had a last minute place she needed to be today, so we will wait and present on hers in August when she returns.
The only thing I want to make sure that, and this is not necessarily a focus area in our times here, but if we, if the state does change and we change the ACT, the SAT, that evaluatory process will need to be reworked.
Sure, yeah.
There are conversion charts that have existed for a while. If we, we utilize that process, if we come to that, maybe we've discussed that if you're in high school.
That'd be great. I just, on Friday and it wasn't on our to-do list, so I wanted to make sure.
We'll bring that back to the board if that's, yep, absolutely. And then Allie can as well.
So a few of the focus areas I'm working on, as Lisa mentioned, are also where hurdles are identified supporting our students. More and more, we have students in poverty that are affected with trauma as well as students that are at risk academically and social-emotional in lots of different ways, so I've been reaching out to different school districts around locally as well as throughout Illinois to find those districts that have processes in place that we may be able to use some of what they're doing to identify students at risk and also work on how can Dunlop support students at risk effectively to meet their entry needs as they're different here in Illinois than they are from other places around Illinois. Identifying areas to improve RTI academics is another focus area. Each building does RTI academics very, very well, some of them do things a little bit differently, so meeting with teams, the teachers, RTI teams to sort of do a gap analysis and identify how we can improve the way we provide interventions and services to kids academically. That kind of rolls into how we identify areas to improve RTI social-emotional learning. As you know, we rolled it out last year in K5s and we're gonna be moving forward for six through 12. It is basically a very similar process to RTI academics, but has a different set of interventions and courses, so looking at a different need for students. So again, meeting with RTI teams and doing gap analysis to try to determine how we can improve in those areas as well. Cost analysis for special education programs, we have students that we send out to the district for services that we don't provide within our district. We do have a very nice continuum of services, but there are some things that we do use CPO for. So working on a cost analysis of our special education programs as well as what we pay for services that CPO provides to determine what we need to do and what would it cost for them to be able to provide more of those services in-house instead of paying CPO for services that we do provide, so working on that. And then ensuring consistency with district-wide discipline procedures, as you know, the new student behavior policies and everything that goes along with those, there's a lot of data that the state will be collecting that we haven't necessarily tabulated in the past, so we need to make sure we have our district-wide referral forms and all those things that have all the data that we will be required to report back to the state, so working on creating some of those forms that the state or that have not already provided for us to use for our discipline procedures, so just making sure we collect all the data that we're going to be required to report back, do that in a very succinct and efficient way.
I was wondering, you mentioned the cost analysis of special education programs that maybe we could bring back in-house. Is there some analysis of space? Do we have the ability?
We're working on the three to five-year plan.
Oh, okay.
So just gonna go with that and if we determine what we need, that we put it in that five-year plan.
I had a question too. So the counseling department falls under your, so one of the things I was wondering about is I know that our counselors are taxed with a lot, but it seems like so many of our students need to help with college planning and, and that's just such a big area. Is there, is there any focus on improving and looking at new resources and?
Absolutely. As you know, we're looking at requests every time and this is, as we all have focus areas that are not on this list, because all the focus areas, what we worked with, the municipal counselors on, is identifying, creating a website that has better apps for them to help students determine as freshmen or actually in work, how they're looking at using career recruiting earlier to get students used to, kind of having an idea of what they want to do so that it will vary depending on when they come in as freshmen, so we can use that system a little bit better and help students determine how to, if you can use smart gouge relationships.
That's good. I believe that's a future agenda item as well.
And you know, I was still thinking about it on Friday, when I met with her, that she was looking at the council department, what she was doing.
Okay, is that everything? Thank you very much. Thank you all for sharing your goals. Mr. Grimm is here, he's gonna present some information on the state and condition of our current facilities.
You're going through this whole book?
Beachside reading, right?
First of all, the task was to put together a comprehensive assessment of the district from a facilities point of view. This has certainly been an undertaking and very much a collaborative effort. This will take a little bit of time to go through, so we'll do what you guys have this for a month and I'll come back in next month's meeting and I'll give just a little bit of a presentation and we'll spend most of our focus on questions and answers.
If there are areas, as you look through it, that you think you would want to know about facilities that we could cover, just, you know, shoot Karen or Tom or myself an email and, you know, if you're wondering about something that's not in there, we'd be glad to get, we tried to, tried to put as much thought into it as we could, but this is also our first shot at putting this together and so if there's stuff you come across, please don't hesitate to let us know.
It looks very comprehensive.
It is, yes.
It is, very nice.
He should help with the five-year, the three to five-year story.
That's why this came first, yep, exactly.
So will this be at a committee at the whole meeting?
Um, I haven't decided how we're gonna do, it'll either be, we've got a lot going on next month and so some will be during committee at the whole and some will be during regular, so I anticipate this to be during committee at the whole, but we'll figure out once we see what all we have.
If I can ask a quick question, what is the most urgent thing that needs to be directed?
I would focus on our energy survey that we've had. I think if we, if we look for some very real savings over the next two to four years, I think we'll find it there. Yes.
And of course the pool.
Where, yeah, where does the pool fall? We will discuss the pool at the three to five-year facility. Yep, there is a pool assessment that you've already seen in there, right? Uh-huh, yeah.
And that's in there as well.
We will have some information on the pool at that time too.
Okay, can I have one more minute?
Sure.
Okay. The district now has a foundation, I think, from which to work from. We have centralized quite a bit of information. We've assessed each of the facilities and hopefully mapped out a strategic direction to preserve, enhance and increase the value of the district's assets. And this took the efforts of a lot of people who I would like to thank in front of the board. I would like to thank Lisa Leitner, the Director of Food Services, Pete Peterson, the Director of Transportation, Brad Schoolman, our district mechanic, all of the maintenance staff that works for the district. They answered a lot of questions, they asked a lot of good questions to make us think about our facilities and our buildings and how we, how we take care of the assets that we have. A number of contractors also helped participate in this, J-Horn Electric, Dylan Plumbing, Intex, and a few others. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Parker and Karen Beverlin to, for their help in providing direction, thought, asking a lot of questions, to help shape this, this document as well. And then finally, I'd like to thank Renata for putting the final look together of this document. And I look forward to your questions over the next month and as we go through all this information for the next meeting.
I think he's finally glad to see us come to his office again, so we, we had lots of questions going through the process.
When I got back from vacation, I'm a little bit not that excited to see you.
We're all excited to see you, Karen.
Nice talking.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, good work. Okay, now we're gonna move on to our drivers' education behind the wheel fee increased waiver and Mrs. Beverlin, you have some information to share with that?
Basically, what that is, is just very quick brief information on getting a full out of the state waiver for drivers' ed fees, that if we fill out a waiver, we can increase drivers' ed fees that will allow us to include teacher salaries in what we charge for drivers' ed. The reason we are required to say $50 that we have now is because under state statute, without a waiver from the state, you can only charge your costs for drivers' ed not including teacher salaries. We are very fortunate to have great relationships with our local car dealer, Green Chambrelay that provides us break rates on our cars, so we cannot, we can't charge more just based on the cost of our cars and our gas and things like that, but fortunately, I mean, as in all school districts, it's the salaries that are really what the cost is for drivers' ed over and above just the cars and the, the gas and the physical. So there's a waiver that we can put together so that we can increase the fee for behind the wheel for drivers' ed and it has to go through the board, we have to sign a resolution and go through that process. And before I move forward and just brought everything, I just wanted to make sure that we were still on the same page of wanting to go through that process and to see and try and get that waiver to be able to recoup some of the costs for drivers' ed behind the wheel going forward. For 17, 18 would not come in play for 16, 17, it would be 17, 18 and if we get the waiver and we, we can decide at that point up to the amount of the waiver, what we would charge and make sure that we are covering our costs, not making money off of drivers' ed, probably still wouldn't even be covered in costs if you consider what the teacher salaries and benefits included, so that's what that's about. But before we move forward to that, I want to have a conversation with the DEA and the drivers' ed teaching and staff before we go through that, so they understand what the process is and what we're, what we're trying to gain as well, so that we're all together.
There was some opposition last time.
Yeah, two years ago.
But this is, this is different. Well, I can just form and I, the majority of, I think, the school districts around do it, so we would just need to maybe give an idea of what we should charge or maybe we're gonna discuss that in upcoming months after you talk to the.
We will discuss it after I talk to the DEA and make sure that, I will run numbers to see where we're at with what to charge and it'll be part of the conversation when we determine the fees for 17, 18 as to what, as to what schools.
And do most schools, excuse me, waive the fees for those students who run free and reduced lunch?
Yes, by law, we, we waive the fees for free and reduced lunch students. There would be at any point in time, any MRPs, we would never permit somebody from participating or being able to participate, his ability to pay.
Well, I know there was opposition a couple of years ago, is there concern that parents feel like they've already paid for part of that cost by paying taxes that goes into our ed funds or?
The opposition wasn't from the community.
Okay, I seem to recall it was from, yeah, yeah.
And how long does the waiver last?
The waiver lasts for five years.
Five years, and you can use or not use it?
You can use or not, you don't have to, it just opens up the ability to basically go up to $250. You still have to have expenses that equate to $250, like a number of students, you can't make money off of behind the wheel, still has to cover the costs related to that program.
Was the opposition so great, is that why they didn't go through this before? Or is it a bunch of different stuff?
It wasn't that it was so great, it was that this, the waiver that's there now didn't exist in the same manner that it does today, it's changed since we were trying to make the changes a few years ago and so this is giving us an avenue to be able to do it with, and with the teacher salaries. And several school districts are, I think that's how, because I think when we talked about drivers' ed fees last year, people asked how can they do it, it's because they have the waiver from the state to return to pay the teacher salaries.
What is the typical cost on other school jobs?
As, as far as from other schools, you mean?
Yeah.
It's usually between two hundred and two fifty for.
You sent out something, I think.
What?
Right, you sent out a graph.
I did send out a graph.
I think that was about the highest, but you're right, I think it was two fifty.
Yeah, so it's, we are significantly lower than others, and we don't have to go up to two fifty, and it just allows us to look at what those costs are and what.
I think we need to keep in mind, too, as we increase fees, we keep adding fees each year. The activity fee, the technology fees going up, and this going up, I think that's a definite thing we need to discuss as far as what the fees will be for, for this as well. I've heard from several parents when they receive that.
The conversations we had, like, three years ago, when, too, when the deficit was coming, there was that concern. The other concern is the, the public who doesn't have students, being in school instead of bringing taxes. It's a nice way to split the, you know, kids, parents who have kids.
Yeah, it's more, it's a fairer way. It's like a user fee instead of spreading it out.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, good discussion. We're all in agreement, I think, with the waiver, at least getting the information and having access to be able to do it. So thank you for looking into that. Okay, um, this will now conclude the information and discussion segment of the meeting. And we're going to move into the consent agenda, and I ask if there are any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda.
You know, I just had one question. I know Lucy answered it, but on the fencing, you know, it's just troubling always to just see one bidder, and is there any way to get bidders from, you know, more bidders?
I think, did you reach out to our, the two big companies, I assume, and one did not return it?
Yes, I invited three, I invited three big local who had to come to the pre-bid, and I received one official bid. The other company didn't decide to not bid, and I don't know why. They wouldn't tell me. So.
And can you go beyond local, or does it become cost prohibitive for them to travel?
For a project of, of that size, which was really minimal. It would be, it would be cost prohibitive to reach out to, say, Billy to enroll Springfield or Champaign, because they would, they would price themselves out to come up here and work on a project that's.
But it's not unrealistic if we had a larger project that there would be people from outside.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so it's posted out on the website. I put it in the paper, so anybody can see.
Can do it if they want to.
Yeah, I was saying.
Okay.
Anything else on the consent agenda? Any other questions, clarifications? Okay, seeing now, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the June fifteen, twenty sixteen Board of Education meeting.
Second. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Isherem.
Aye.
Golds Halsar.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Sowen.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Golsman.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, and we're now moving to the action items, second of the meeting. And the first thing we have is the bill list and treasures report, which were included in the board package for review. Mrs. Beverley is here to answer any questions you may have. Did you have anything you wanted to add this month?
The budget for at the end of the year, and it's right where we expected it to be. So it's very exciting, and once again, and like I said before, we will have some carryover into, into reserves for next year. So that's exciting as well.
I have a question. So pool has been on everyone's mind for about the last ten years. Is there a way that we can, like, earmark funds, you know, start a savings account for pools? So gradually, when we decide to go forward, if we decide, the only.
You're going to have to have, you're going to have to sell bonds to those who need pool no matter what. You're never going to be able to save enough money to own this for the pool. Yes, you could. It would be in the building fund. It would be sitting there, and it could be in reserves and saying, this amount is earmarked for pool or whatever, but it may come at the cost of being able to upgrade a classroom or to upgrade another building, or some of the other things that are, that you'll see in that book, to take that money out of their incentive side, so that in, you know, the number of years that we have, we can be able to build. That would be the only thing I would caution with. It's not, it can't be done. It's just, you can't go put it in another account. You can't take it from here and just get over there.
And when we built the high school, they took money from the education fund for the, and I, I would not want to take money out of the education fund.
Just, that wasn't for the high school, though. That was for, um, pre-growth, right?
Oh, Hickory Grove, is it?
Athletic upgrades. Just wanted to make sure that.
That was for pre-growth. And the building fund would be, if we took money, we had, we had set it aside.
Oh, you set it aside within the building fund, okay.
To fund twenty operations and maintenance, but it would still be at the detriment of what probably still needs to be done today, because that fund is so limited itself, too. So we have excellent facilities, but they take, they still make up, and they're all getting to the age where that need is, becoming something that needs to be done.
Thank you very much. Anything else from Mrs. Beverley? All right. Also, we had our district investment report that was in your package. Were there any questions for Mr. Nguyen, who's with us this evening? Or Mr. Nguyen, did you have anything to share?
Maybe one thing just to highlight is that there are some Illinois municipal bonds in this portfolio. I hold them in for a specific reason. They're, they're doing great. They mature in less than a year. So we, in a wonkish way, it's a great investment. I never get about two percent yield on those things. So, and they're general obligation bonds, so, yeah, literally, the state of Illinois would have to vaporize before they don't get paid. But my, my point is, I just wanted to verbally say that, just because, obviously, there's a lot going on in our state. But those are fine. And then I, does anyone have any questions? I have a maybe a personal note that I wanted to maybe share, that way it took me a little bit to mold over. But on the electronic device, I, I'm not well-read on it. I, I didn't have a chance to read myself on the bill, or the, the, I'm so used to, that's my language. Anyway, though, but I, I did want to share that, I, I mean, I'm, in, in my industry, in my job, I'm very aware of the technological trade, and that's our society's going through, and, and, and that trade has left the station. I mean, we are just a technological station, or, I mean, I see trends, like thirty percent of the universities are going to be closing over the next ten years due to demographics, and also due to virtual classrooms and so forth. I mean, it's really a, just a sobering and awe-inspiring trend of electronics and so forth. I do want to just convey my, my, my thought as a parent. I do have a child who's addicted to electronics, and probaring that as a parent has been just a challenge. I mean, every, every parent has a challenge. I mean, I'm not trying to put myself out as unique. But I, I do want to maybe express that as we move to electronics, we need to be aware of the additions that will come, and also the bad things that will flow through electronics, you know, for not having other bad things that will come in that regard. We can't stop it and so like that, but I, I don't know what other side of the scale offsets that, because there's just this awesome, the world's at your, you know, you're going to, you want to learn French, you're going to learn from, you know, someone in France. You know, you have that coming down the pipe. And then you have all this other stuff. And so, so I, I didn't get up, because it took me a little bit to think about it, but I'm only volunteering this, not to try and make any decisions on your part. I'm not well-studied, and, and the way I'm wired is that when I vocalize an opinion, I, I, it's important to me, because my career is based on that. But, but I do want to just throw, as a parent, of the, the addictions that come through electronics and so forth, and it just, you know, houses the school system. We, we can help, maybe offset that, or the heritage board, or, you know, I'm just saying, that, that's the only thing I want to throw out, not to stop anything necessarily, but just kind of that, that thought.
Internet's safe.
Hope I didn't speak out of turn. Thank you very much. I'm sure that maybe it was there for me.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the, you know, like, municipal bonds that are doing well, too. Thank you for your work with that. Okay, I, well, if there's no other questions from Mr. Nguyen or Mrs. Beverley, I ask for a move, a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of three million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents, as presented.
All second.
All right, thank you, Karen, and thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Golds Halsar.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Sowen.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Golsman.
Aye.
Isherem.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now we're going to move into our conversation or discussion that's going to open up regarding the one-to-one technology implementation plan. And before we go to any motions, I just want to make sure we open up the floor and get any questions answered that any board members may have. We've had a lot of good discussion here. We had a lot of good public participation this evening on both sides. I think we, I sent out an email earlier today. Lisa put together a timeline for the discussion that we've been having on this initiative, which I don't have it in front of me, but I believe started back, and, and at least the timeline starts back in two thousand thirteen, where we had discussion, and we had Matt Jensen bring in technology plans. We had implementation conversations. There's been a lot of discussion, and Karen or Lisa, feel free to jump in. Heather's not with us. She's busy having a baby right now, so our curriculum director is not here to share all her work that she's done over the last, um, year plus on this initiative, but, um, but basically, there's been a lot of conversation. A lot of moving parts. It's a big decision. We want to make sure that we're making the right decision, and we're making the right, for the right reasons, which is for the students. Everything we do should always be for the students. So, um, so I'll open it up, and I know the board, you know, we've had a lot of conversation over the last few weeks, especially on this topic, so I don't know who would like to start.
Can I just make a statement from the administrative side up here, right? And I know there's been a lot of, uh, conversations, and we've had, um, the, the committee has, has done an outstanding job, and so on behalf of the board and the administration, I want to thank the, the one-to-one committee once again for all your work throughout the last year. But, um, you know, in talking with Mrs. Bowman before she left today, our, our recommendation stands from the administrative team, the one-to-one, um, plan that she presented and that the committee presented last month. Our recommendation would be that, for that to be approved, but we're open for any discussion that the board would like to have, but from a, just from a recommendation standpoint, I just want to make sure that, that that was noted.
And can you, can you just give us a, just a brief summary of the current recommendation where it is?
If I had all that in front of me, I would. Let me pull that up.
Sure, no problem.
But, um, we would stick with, the next year, there would be no funding. We would have the, our year will be focused on staff development, K-12, and that starts with our August Institute. That has already been planned out. All of our district leadership team activities, all of our staff development, our school improvement days, everything will be focused on technology, getting our teachers ready for the following year. And without that, in talking with all the schools, because I went on a few visits before Heather got here, and then all the ones that the committee went on, that was the key to the success of any program, is to have your teachers ready. And we can't expect them to do anything different with technology if we don't give them that background with the one-to-one training. So that would be the focus for this year. Also, with district leadership team, we would invite a couple of members of the board to serve on that team with us this year. But usually, we focus on three to four major things, but we will make one-to-one, the implementation plan, the focus of that going forward for this year. So that's what's in store for this year.
So who, who would be on that committee? Board members, community parents?
Community parents, students. There will be an application process. We're going to have a different way of doing district leadership team this year. We will have people be able to apply.
But this would be, sorry, I didn't interrupt you, but this would be a subcommittee of the district leadership?
No, this would be the focus of district leadership.
That's what it would do.
Exactly, yep.
For the next twelve months.
For the next twelve months. Yep, there'll be a application process similar to what we did with the athletic leadership team to get a better variety of students, teachers, parents, community members to be on that team. Then for seventeen, eighteen, we would have the Chromebooks for grades four through eight, and then we would have iPads, it looks like, for K-1, and, um, teachers, help me out here. Was there anything else for the following year?
All right, so seventeen, eighteen school year would be four through eight.
Yep.
And I thought you said something else.
That's it for the iPads, too, right? Uh, the iPads are being moved, though. They're not new purchases. They're just being moved. Okay?
And then iPads for K-1?
Yes, but those are just iPads that are already in the district, and they'll be moved then down to K-1. Okay? Then for eighteen, nineteen, is when you'd have your Chrome, all your Chromebooks would be for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We would have Chromebook carts for the second and the third grade students. And you would have, all your other devices would be rolled up. It looks like repurchase fourth grade. What do you guys mean by that? I wasn't.
The ones that were initially purchased with the four graders, so with those four graders, they've become two graders.
Okay.
So for the next year's.
Perfect.
And then eight, eight, nine, so we all wait for revival.
Roll up. Okay, then for nineteen, twenty, your kindergarten, first grade iPads, Chromebooks for grades three. Essentially, what we would recommend the board do is that we come back every year and ask for your approval before we spend any money throughout the next two years as we roll this plan out. So again, what you would do tonight is to approve the plan, but before we spend any money, in the following year, we would be back to ask for your approval again before we spend any money on devices. Okay? Because as, you know, Karen alluded to, if we were to get into a budget situation a year from now, things we're not aware of, it would be a much bigger picture than whether we're doing one-to-one or not. There'd be a lot of decisions we would have to make, not just with one-to-one. We would have to prioritize a lot of things.
So a question that we had was why, it would be Tom, maybe you know, but the high school teachers hadn't necessarily bought into it, as such as the middle school. Do you know what, what specifically that they, they were interested in? Is there anything that could be done to overcome their uneasiness with the name of that?
I didn't sense that. It is not, it showed me, maybe Mary Ann or the pilot, you could, you could have conversations in local meetings, but.
I think a lot of the apprehension came before our last SIBD, just, you know, we had that kind of mini training session. I think people just felt like it was one more new thing they were trying to figure out. But after that, after we kind of showed them how it was going to be a slow process, involving lots of training upfront, my personal experience was the very next PLT, I had people emailing me that don't even use their smartphone and saying, can you help me set up my classes on campus? I want to see how this works. And so, you know, after that point, I felt like it was more interest, and how do I use them? We almost had to slow them down at that point, say, well, we're not even sure about this yet, so. But I think after those initial questions were answered, people were more, I think, so.
I would say all the rest, you must work with the place.
So the high school worked up towards, then I guess the question is the top-down approach, you know, high school, middle school, and gradually, you know, because I think the, with the elementary students, I think a lot of parents are concerned, those soft skills that, that kids learn. So if we know that the EQ is a better predictor of life success than the IQ, then maybe we should concentrate more on the, the soft skills. And if we can engage the community, maybe more of the, the parents would buy into it at the elementary level, like, oh, Beth Derry left. She got me excited. And some of the teachers, the way they described how they were used in the classroom, you know, very limited time, you know, like, an hour was the most, I think, I've heard. And Heather was trying to guarantee, you know, the best she could, that, that that would happen, but there, there was, there was a lot of apprehension, I think, with parents with that, that screen time. So from what we just heard, is there any reason we could start with the high school and work our way down, high school, middle school, as opposed to elementary, middle?
And I think from a funding standpoint, if we did run into financial trouble, it would be better to have started at the high school so that, you know, we wouldn't have to switch, if that's the only place in a few years that we could afford to do it. It'd be better to have, I think, started it there and then keep it. So I would prefer to start at the high school as well. But, I mean, I'd love to hear.
So you're saying in that first year, can I just ask a question? So on the presentation, can you kind of describe, like, best practices? How much, it's probably a tool in your toolbox for teaching, from what I gather. So how much time, and you kind of alluded to this, how much time are you actually, is it ten percent of the day, fifteen percent of the day? Do you see as best practices with this technology as it moves in the next couple of years?
It's really not a set percentage. It's what it should be per day, rather based on the less.
on the less, what skill they're working on the next week, if they're productive at all, and to continue on the lesson, uh, like whatever means, so maybe, so if the boxes is in each theme, um, and as the classroom goes through just substituting to actual transform, I think, like, uh, Beth had referred to when she spoke, really moving more towards those class-based learning, which is a pretty essential skill over the workplace, I mean, any company has a myriad of project.
I'm just kinda going more to the younger kids in that, you know, the younger age, where I think there's some apprehension out there as far as, you know, what's, uh, what are the standards gonna be for a teacher, are they gonna use it a lot, or, you know, is there gonna be set standards for those younger kids, so they're, you know, you don't have one teacher that's using it all day and you're not doing the other, you know, teaching stuff, so I'm just trying to get an, an idea, where do you see things at the younger levels, you know, fitting in?
And I think Heather spoke to that, she, just recently, when I was talking to her yesterday, you know, it's not all the time, and that was kind of a concern I had too, 'cause it's, it's a cost, but it's not all the time, it's not with every subject, it's with a lesson, and it would be maybe an enhancement to a lesson.
Right.
That's absolutely right.
So they're not always tied down, and then I guess, then, then the question is, 'cause I'm just going back and forth, then the question is, well, do we need one-to-one, or is one-to-two okay, and can we have a library, and then I can reserve them, I, you know, all kinds of questions I'm playing with in my head to make sure that we, you know, appropriately fund, that we're, you know, fiduciarily responsible and, and make good choices and, and give technology to the schools, but yet watch, watch those taxpayer dollars.
And I think that's a lot of what your one-to-one committee and your district leadership team could really focus on during this next year, knowing, um, if this were to pass through the board, knowing they have the support of the board going forward, but how do we work out some of those details, you know, and I think, um, until we know that this is the direction that, that the board, that we have their support to move forward, you don't really wanna waste time as well if this isn't moving forward as far as with our teachers and that kinda thing, to work on those kinda things, but that would absolutely be things we would work on in the next year, those are very good points.
And I wanted to mention, I'm sorry to interrupt, that internet safety, Dave, I mean, you, you kinda hit it, it's kind of a balance, but, you know, they maybe start teaching them at a, at a young age, but there is, you know, talking to some parents from other schools, so they said the walls that are set up are good in school, they work in school, but they don't work at home.
Matt, can you talk to that a second?
Yeah, he talked about this at last month's presentation.
Well, Beth, go ahead and talk, because three of us weren't.
Yeah, can you talk about that again?
See, the internet filter that is actually in the, the pricing for mobile actually goes home as well, so, uh, students cannot browse or navigate from home, I mean, there's always a way around it, it's, it's, it's very, very, very good, from what we have researched, I mean, our filter here is very good, I mean, we've had students emailing saying, please unlock this website, I mean, please unlock the gate, because I can something to do during study halls, I mean, we have things like, so it allows me pretty good if they're emailing and begging us to do this, uh, you know, things like that, so, there are certain schools that have set the call that did not have this sort of filter in place, and, and I don't think that I would be comfortable, you know, I don't think anybody in this room would be comfortable with that approach, uh, but this filter actually does go home and it logs and sends emails back to us at any hour of the night, but where they've been, we can pull a report for parents, it's really been for the last twenty-four hours, um, the email is set up our Google app so that there's no email, I believe, K-4, and then fifth through 12th grade has email, and we can set even strict requirements so that the students can only email within each other, they can't receive or send email outside of the district. Um, you can put a disclaimer at the bottom while the student emails, says, uh, hey, this came from the student email address, and we, you know, we'll get these random emails and, and, you know, on the help desk, and we're like, who is this person, oh, it's a student, you know, so it makes them more definitive and more defined on what they are. We also archive everything that comes through the email and the files that they create, so even if students, uh, take these files, these emails, say they bullied another student or things like that, we can actually look at them, it saves forever a lifetime. So, I think there are some fail cases in place, I mean, nothing's perfect, but, again, I think this is a pretty good start, so it's where we need to keep going.
You can block Amazon Prime, that tends to be our problem.
Well, so, probably can't lock them.
So, talking about, Bryant sent a really good, um, paper that was done by a state and sent to their state legislature, and, and what I walked away reading from it was they, the schools had never planned enough money for it, financially they needed more IT people, they needed more professional development, um, and I'm assuming you're gonna tell me that, that you've covered all that and we've...
Well, I think that goes back to that report, I mean, most of that best practices, it's all about the implementation and the planning over the next twelve months, and I think that's why this leadership committee is so important to vet all that through, depending on where we go with this tonight, but it seems like, uh, that's where all the effort needs to be in at the beginning, is that's gotta be planned, obviously it's not everything runs, you know, without a hitch, but I think that's where we have to best our time, is in the next twelve months if we go forward.
And some of that's been laid out already, right?
Some of it is, yeah. Karen, can you talk to the finances just a, a second and just kinda clear out any questions that might be out there as far as, how, how are you paying for this?
How are you paying for it? Um, it's a mix between, um, current money that we already have that's allocated for technology, so it would be, instead of being allocated to computer labs that are, you know, if you have to take your classroom to, we would be allocating it towards the one-to-one, and then is about two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, um, every year that they are given on technology, and it will just be reallocated to pay for one-to-one. So if we look at the cost, we need the staff and the devices, we're looking at about two hundred, we're looking at around two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, um, new ed fund revenue, or new revenue that would be, that would need to come in to pay for the one-to-one initiative, that is still enough money to cover our salary increases and staff needs with the money that would be coming in for EAVs, assuming that it stays as we plan it, like we said, if we go and, or accrue it every year, we can make that decision on where to go for the next year, when we actually know what's going to happen and we're not obligated to anything three years out or anything like that for money that we're concerned that won't come. So it's not, so it is at the end, it's about seven hundred thousand dollars a year, but that's only three hundred, that's only around that two hundred fifty thousand of new money each year that will, that it will take to be able to implement the one-to-one.
And overall, isn't that, I think when I was looking at the numbers, it's less than one percent of our overall ed fund ba- balance, and then it drops off, it, it's below one percent, that two hundred fifty thousand is below one percent after the first year.
Exactly, because after implementation, the only cost that we have, the only new cost that we have going forward will be just the renewing of the devices, because the staff needs to be added to support the teachers and provide that support and to make sure that it's being implemented with fidelity, that staff, those costs will be there, and they're year over year, but after you get the implementation and all that stuff is in place, they're already there, they're not costing you more, you're not adding the staff every single year, it's just...
And you did run some numbers, right, like if the EAV fell to one percent or...
I should, yes, so we know for sixteen, seventeen, that our EAV is a hundred and thirty-six million dollars, it means it's about three point eight percent, so as I do projections, um, to what we really look at when I'm budgeting and looking out, um, I look at about three percent, that's, kinda that's where, like, we're, you know, from the county and things like that, that's where, with the tax appeals that have come through and things like that, that's where we're at as far as new revenue coming in. Every one percent is about two hundred, say about, I'm gonna give you exactly, about two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, so as EAV, if EAV would go down, instead of getting three percent, we get two percent, we're looking at two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars less, and that's where it's important that we're making the decision every year, because if it does drop some, maybe we don't roll it out to as many grade levels, because we, you know what I mean, is that we can, we can slow it down if we have to, and those are all things that we've talked about and we know, and that, that's all part of the process. I, and I, Heather's not here, so I need to say this question here, but, and the committee is here and all the work that it, but I don't think anybody thinks this plan, this plan's not gonna look exactly like it does right now on paper when it's implemented, just as no one else has, has, that it's implemented, you know, changes happen because you learn from the implementation and things like that as to what's best to move it forward for the students and for the teachers, but I think one thing in the staff is there, and I, um, I think it's an allocation of where we think it's important to put the support for our staff as well, and I think whether it's one-to-one technology or it's some other, you know, best practices for teachers, that, that teacher support, that support into the classrooms for them and to provide that, to help them to be the best teachers that they can possibly be, is, um, important no matter, no matter what it's for, so that would be a cost that I would say, no matter what we're doing, that support needs to be there for them. And we have amazing teachers, so if anybody can pull it off and do it well, it's our teachers, and...
Karen, I have a quick question here, and, and it's for you, Angela, I know that you mentioned costs, can you go through specifically what those costs are, because I know that you, you said there was a two-point-three million upfront cost, I just wanna make sure that you understand exactly what these costs are, and then I'll answer, ask my next, next question after that, Karen.
Yes, so it's, um, it's two-point-one million dollars over the entire four-year implementation, so in...
And that's all K through twelve?
That's K through twelve, that's for the entire implementation for adding the staff, and that's year over year, so like, in sixteen, seventeen, there's no cost, if we're not spending any more money to do one, to get ready to roll out one-to-one than we would, whether we were doing it or not, it's just a matter of where the focus is at. In seventeen, eighteen, the total is about, is about seven hundred fourteen thousand, that's five hundred fifty-six thousand in devices, thirty-two thousand five hundred in a tech support staff, and a hundred twenty-five thousand in teachers, in curriculum support, and that's, um, two teachers to provide that support.
But we're already spending, aren't we spending how much per year now on the device that would move over?
On the device, we're spending, we're spending three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars now.
That would move over into that total?
That will move into that, so yes. And then in the year two, it's about six hundred seventy-eight thousand, because the devices are a smaller, we're not buying as many from that second year, which, and then we're adding another tech person to continue to provide that support, as well as an additional curriculum person to provide the support to the teachers as we expand to, to make sure that the support's there, make it run smoothly, and then, this is for K-12, and in the, um, nineteen, twenty year, it's about four hu- a little under four hundred thousand dollars for the devices, and we would be at three tech people for just a little under a hundred thousand for their salaries, and, um, two hundred fifty thousand dollars in teachers, which is, uh, which is fine teachers, so, um, it's providing that support we've worked from the...
Um, you know, our curriculum director is not here, I think her initial intention was to do fourth through eighth.
I'm just sort of altered for reacting, so I'm just...
Yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent, I just, I think if we can agree to a, um, a H train, if, you know, elementary is, um, uncomfortable for some, and we agreed to six through twelve, I think how that's implemented, that committee should work on, you know, like we shouldn't tie ourselves to the specifics, we just make the overall statement, and let, let that work out.
So, if, if you would, if you would go six through twelve, would be, in the first year, you, you, you would let the committee in the next twelve months decide what's the best role, either the, the high school or the middle school, not both at the same time, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, and I think budget-wise, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think make, the budget between six to eight, what they were planning for is much different than the high school too, so, I don't wanna get into the weeds, but I know that could be a potential issue too.
So my, so my question would be, you know, for those that wanna sit on that leadership committee, would that be something you would, you know, be in favor of, that you're part of that process?
Yeah, I think there's a reason why I propose this, because this is, this is a big initiative, right, and then we should not, looking for like short-term, tonal growth.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
This is, this is big enough kind of proposal and initiative we're trying to implement in now, right? So, I believe there's a reason why they come with a Gen one, Gen two, Gen three, and they specify it's left from five to eight as the first group, because, because it, I usually emphasize on the high school as well, but this one, it will take a while to see the result, so, I mean, if, high school, unfortunately, junior and senior, they're, they're too late for, for this, I, that's why I think they start, want to start, the stone to fool stay with us long enough to get the full benefit from, from this, this program. So, I mean, I understand the high school, yeah, important, but I think there's a reason why they want to start at a lower level for this.
And to Paul's, oh, go ahead, you go ahead. And to Paul's point, I mean, the committee spent a lot of time throwing a lot of options around, and, um, I don't know if somebody from the committee wants to speak as to why you chose four through eight, Angie, or somebody raising their hand, or Matt?
I'm focusing on the middle schooling, I don't know what was the day, um, point because of the establishment of education to each of their places during, it's part of our community and, and how they, how during that time, students receive international book reading and math, and that's why I'm being pushed with one-one, plus it's been structured multiple, um, and it's, and knowing the importance of student growth, being a student where they are, and that may give the differentiation, which is like you said in the pilot, spoken, or they were able to be much easier, um, and a much greater model, having had the technology with this, with that, may give digitally assigned things to the, with the curriculum, um, that we're ready to go, um, so as with the, you know, between CEDEX and HARA, um, and the focus of moving away from high school assessment growth, we see this as a way to give a good structural for the teachers for them to use in addition to all the other various methods out there, um, to help students, to reach students where they are and help them, um, which that, of course, will also want to reach achievement on those high status. Um, just because, sort of begin to go back to my thing with school, because they establish, um, uh, how they currently use our assessment systems within the district and are able to, I mean, it's just kind of established within our culture, they can use those technological systems up that are available, um, so we want to be able to start there, so that we could, um, establish within our district, experts that could, that we use for ed camps to then teach our, our staff at large through school group matches, things like that.
And the elementary, the pilot program in the elementary school, just thinking on that?
Um, I'm alive, just so that when they're getting to the, um, the middle school level, where it will have, I'm very trying to, at that point, they're all establishing that culture and aren't being dropped, the middle of the ocean, but they're, they're, they're feet are very much, so, but, they're able to try that one.
Angie, Jason?
We had tons of discussion about this, and threw out every scenario that you have thrown out, and by doing four, eight, we were able to utilize all of the Chrome cards that are already in the district going up to the high school for each department, and the iPads that are already in the district going down to the lower grades, so by starting in fourth grade and going through eighth grade, the progression just made more sense. That's, I mean, we did throw out every scenario, and we had it on the board for charts, and, I mean, we put a lot of thought just into where to begin the implementation.
And so if in two, two or three years, our EAV, you know, tanks, and the school funding formula changes, and we get even less money from the state, um, and we only can provide one-to-one devices, say, three or four grade levels, do you think it's most important to have it at the high school, I mean, if, you know, for the next ten years, that's all we can do?
In my opinion, by then, um, it will already have gone through, you know, all of the grades, therefore, I would say, maybe not at school, it's, it's hard to say without seeing, you know, the process and how it's gonna work at each level.
I mean, I guess my concern is, you roll it out the middle school, then, you know, if you have a funding issue, then, you know, you'd have the program at the middle school with the, you know, professional development for those people, and we wouldn't have it at the high school, which is the closest to, you know, our, ending our time with us, where students are gonna either go into the job market or go to college, where they're gonna need these skills, uh, more immediately.
But by then, we're only financing, the same we'd be financing with our traditional labs that, you know, our leases that we do over debt, so, it would not be that much more, once we've already implemented, um, the one-to-one, it wouldn't be that much more to keep it going than what we have now.
I mean, but in year two or three or four, we still have significant rollout costs then, I mean, what if we can't afford the rollout costs?
I...
And then we don't roll out?
I think that's what Karen's saying, where's more important to be, if you just, if you just could pick one.
But I'm just saying, where do you put it first, you know what I'm saying?
I see, I see what you're saying, but I'm also taking the optimism, but, and...
And I'm always, I told Karen, I'm the worrier.
Maybe, maybe I can some answer that concern because I don't think this is the lowest priority program, right? Once we adapt it, this, this program should be pretty on the top. So if the bad time comes, I don't, I don't necessarily see that we put this program on the list. Because, you know, like Lisa mentioned, that we're going to go through another prioritization, that that time, what is the appropriate one to cut, if we have to cut. But if we think that this program is the lowest priority that we're trying to implementing, spending this much of time, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that's the case.
I don't know that, and kind of the Paul's point, you know, if, once you adopt the K twelve rollout, if you were to get into a budget situation, I don't know that this would be the first thing to go.
What other program, what other programs would you have that would cost?
Everything would be on the table.
Everything would be on the table, yeah.
I felt like we were pretty lean. So, I mean, what else would there be? Would it be, uh-
I mean, what, out of the ed fund, you don't have a whole lot you can cut.
There's a lot of things you can look at, that we do, that you need to decide, are those your priorities or not? You know?
Well, again, from all the data you show, I think, I'm, I'm a proponent of it, but I don't think the data shows, and maybe I'm going to be wrong, Paul, that says, while you have this, your academic achievement just goes off the charts. It doesn't really show that. So I think it's great to have, and I think it's important that we do it. I just don't know if it's going to have the impact that you're saying, because I haven't seen any studies that show that, yet.
I'm sure this impact, I just don't touch anyone, otherwise I don't, I don't know this program existing. Many other schools already adapted. It is hard to measure, I agree. But also, the, I think opportunity we're going to provide to the kids is some, some, something is probably unmeasurable, and maybe the true benefit they will get is actually probably quite useful to them.
Could be, it could be. I just, I'm just saying, I just don't know if you're going to have where it's such a big impact, you say, we can't get rid of this. I don't know if I've seen that, but it could be. But I'm a, I'm on the side of implementing some type of this.
I'm more looking at, instead of spending money, and I'm sure we can afford it for this year, and then, and I think this is the right time to implementing, teachers supporting, we have young teachers, they can adapt it to new, better property. And then, but I'm more looking at, if we not to do that, then how can you quantify that opportunity we're going to lose? That probably costs a lot more than two hundred fifty dollars.
How can you quantify, what was the question?
Opportunity you're going to lose.
Yeah, lost opportunity.
I think it's a lot more than four thousand, it's bigger than two hundred fifty dollars. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year, that's pretty much.
So do you feel like our students right now, when they go to college, they're not prepared for the use of technology? Or, or when they go to the job market?
My opinion, my opinion is I'm not, I'm not focusing on the technology.
Oh, okay.
Right, the technology is, I think some teachers mentioned that this is a tool to bring-
I agree it's a tool.
Probably more knowledge, more information.
Hopefully, right?
The creativity, improving the critical thinking. I don't think this device is the, learning how to use device is not, that's not the goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody had a hand up back there?
Yes. Yeah, so I know I'm not on the committee or anything, but as an alum at the high school, in not having this one to one, I know the concern is having four eight or getting high school. I mean, I've never had better professional development in high school without one to one, and I've never been more prepared for college than any other students that in my college, honestly, that hit Southern. The professional development I learned in a lab without one to one is phenomenal. So if we can provide the one to one for just the fourth through eight, and a budget problem does happen, where we can't provide it for the high school, at least the middle school is getting that professional development down there. So I can see, not to see both sides, but otherwise if a budget problem does happen, the great professional development is still in the high school, so.
Good info.
Thank you.
Right. I have a couple of technical questions. On the replacement policy, there were a lot of concerns from parents about that, and just how it would be implemented. Have we benchmarked with other districts who self insure? I, you know, I'm just a little bit concerned, are there going to be disagreements all the time about, well, it wasn't my kid's fault? You know, it was somebody else's, it was, it was just the fault of the device? How much administrative time do you have to spend? Do they have to spend, the schools who've done this, negotiating that?
From what I, what I've understood, from what I've researched, there's two types of insurance, who would be self insured, and then parents buy insurance policies, or the school buys an insurance policy and sells back the policy to said parents. I've seen some questions about breakage rates, you know, why would the parent have to pay for loss? They're paying a fee. Essentially, what the districts are saying is, if there's no penalty, then they'll break it as many times as they want. The kids are, they need them every day. You know, it's obviously the goal, if I'm breaking them every day and, and working in charge, there are, if they were breaked, then obviously their parents have to pay that fee. I'm not sure, you know, what the other question, question you kind of was, but-
Well, just, what are, what are other districts' experiences who have self insured? Do they have a lot of disputes where the kid and the parent say, no, my kid didn't break this?
Well, I, I know my, my team partner John, I are pretty good at figuring out, you know, when we open a computer, who's still on it and who's still so in it. And so I mean, a lot of the accidental damage is, is pretty easy to spot. You know, we've had teachers that leave a pencil in their notebook and slam it shut, and they break the screen. And they say, wow, how did that happen? Well, we kind of know. You know, we've had a teacher that actually drove with like a, off their car, and said, I don't know how this happened. Well, there's a big that aside, but I think you got a pretty good idea. By us providing cases, and by, by us providing these tools, and obviously us telling the students that, this is how you need to be respectful, respectable of the device, I think we'll be okay.
So they're only going to be liable if it's their fault? If it's just a-
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, if, if the machine fails, if, I, I mean, I guess, uh, my perspective is, if, if a machine fails and it gets its hands, because the machine failed, then we'll gladly fix it. I mean, I, I can't, I can't think how we can charge them if they, if a heart attack went on already, and that Chromebook is after six months, we're going to go ahead and get a check by the end of the day, you know, to get you back in running.
And just what if somebody refuses to pay? What happens if they don't sign the Google Docs authorization form? And did we have that happen during the pilot? Or say they don't, they refuse to pay for the device? What happens then with that student?
We did have some parents actually that wanted to sign off. We talked to most of them, most of them ended up signing off. However, a lot of the parents were okay with Google Docs once they understood it more. You know, we could find each of the apps and what it did. Now, there's another feature that we can turn on and say, okay, K twelve, completely no email for, for certain select students. You don't have that email to use Google Apps if you log in with an email address, but it's turned off. So if the parents are worried about that two-way communication with students or outside world, even as a twelfth grader, that's fine. I mean, they can still participate in Canvas and Google Apps and, and do the documents and do Google Drive. So I mean, there are some ways around, you know, so, and that would make the main concern was, you know, we had a couple of parents in the lower grades say, well, my student has email. Why are they needing an email address? Because it said in the document, it will be add on app students dot net. Well, a little bit of floor, educate the parent as far as what they're getting, pretty much eliminated all, most of those problems, not all of them.
And so if you did have a student, you know, parent refused, what, what happens theoretically?
I mean, my, my opinion is like bringing their book to school. I, I think, I'm not sure what the punishment would evolve with our, our schools, but I think it'd be the same approach.
And I think that, that, to your point, I think those are all great questions. I think that's, those are things that that committee over the next year can work through. I know Heather and the team have done a lot of that work, and they thought through some of that. But I think some of those things are the things over the next year, prior to the first year of implementation, that we can work out, and we can, you know, talk to more schools and, and look at. I think those details will evolve over the next year of that committee working together.
And one more question from Matt. Sorry, didn't mean to catch you off guard. Um, so, well, maybe not even Matt, why, why Chromebooks? You know, I hear that they're, you know, they, they are less expensive, but they also break easier?
I'm not sure if that's exactly accurate.
Okay.
Chromebooks are less expensive, there are less mobile parts. Generally, everything is in the Google App Cloud. And they say that the documents are not saved on the computer, and they're actually saved in the cloud as they, as they function. So what we found is we brought, I think, ten devices to a demo aid for the whole committee. And it was like, hey, this one's great, this one's awful, fully touchscreen school, but I don't know if we really need that. And then we were going through the process, our K one teachers really felt the iPad was the best solution for them. They don't need that keyboard yet, whereas the, the second through twelfth grade pilot teachers recognize that, but state assessments need a full keyboard, it's a much simpler typing papers, you know, rather than, it doesn't, you know, the beyond screen keyboard, like I just called it, take a path through screen. You know, you don't have that issue when you're trying to type your paper on a Chromebook. I don't think they're cheap or safe, they take a lot of surprise. The last few years, ten years ago, I totally think they were pieces of junk. But I feel the last few years, especially the model that we have today is very durable. And actually, the majority of the school is pretty huge in the same model. Not all of them have the touchscreen, but they all have the general, the same, similar model that we have, with pretty good rates of breakage. You know, there's models that people mentioned that have fifty percent breakages. I mean, that's, that's a huge number when you have, you know, three thousand devices. But I can honestly say, I think we fixed three Chromebooks out of nine hundred we have currently, or seven hundred and forty five, I think is the current number, in the last two years. And they've all been, you know, with Chrome, with Chromebooks are cars, so they'll plug them, and then they walk back to their house, and they generally drop them, because they're not in cases. You know, they're just shoved in, the car's plugged in, charged. So a lot of those may be, you know, avoidable by having them, they get carried in, carried cases all day long. I mean, it does have an added section.
And what's, what do we feel, again, just one more time, the urgency of, of doing this now, as opposed to getting a little bit more input maybe from parents and the community at large, looking at maybe the data a little bit better in terms of the effect of the Caterpillar economy? What, what's the urgency in, in doing it now as opposed to waiting another year to begin?
Well, I think really all we're looking for tonight is for the board to put their stamp of approval on, yes, you think K twelve devices are a good idea, and we're not spending any money. And so I think, kind of, to your point Karen, we can spend the next year getting more input and getting more information and working on the details. But in the meantime, preparing our staff, because that's the direction we want the, the district to head. If it isn't the direction that the board wants us to head, then administratively, we need to regroup with our teachers and, and come back to you with some different recommendations. Because this district can either sit here stagnant, or we can take a step in a direction and allow our students to compete with other students, you know, in a way that they are not able to do that at this point. And so I, I think that's what we're looking for, is assurance from the board that, yes, K twelve is what we want, now let's work out the details and bring that back. If that's not what the board wants, then we need to take that back to the committee, and we need to redo our staff development, starting with our August institute, so.
So we're not locking into four through eight right now?
All we're looking for, all we're, and then when I say we, administratively, what we're looking for is the support of the board for the K twelve implementation. And in the meantime, we can start our staff development, and then we would come back to you in the spring, next year, and say, we're ready to, assuming that everything goes forward, we're ready to start the implementation for the Chromebooks four eight. And then the board would have to take a vote on that. And but in the meantime, we can keep getting more data and bring that back to you. And if we get to that point, you know, and we've trained our teachers, and, and the board says, either financially or because of information the leadership team brings back, it's, it's not what you want to do, then we need to regroup.
So the grades is to be determined, really? Because I am really not, just what I've seen with the program, I've had four kids, they've all gone through, and I, those, those grades K through four, I told Heather, because she was so nice and she was so energetic, she convinced me to even go down into grade five, but I just can't see, knowing, you know, they need to learn to read and write and math. And that mental math is so important, and not that that's going to take it away, you know, these computers, because I think that does enhance, and then we just have to remember that it's still there. They are still in the elementary school, they're in a one to two ratio, depending on where you're from. So they can still be used, right?
So, so I'm just, yeah, I, I just want to start getting to Paul's on where we are, so we're not here at eleven o'clock, on one circle. What I'm hearing you say Beth, is that fifth grade is, is where you stop?
For now, I'm willing to go forward and take a look for another year and, and then discuss, you know, what we, are the findings and, and going forward, you know?
So are you saying six through twelve?
I am saying I'm willing to, I want to hear what everyone else says. I'm willing to go forward and look at it for another year, implement it seventeen, eighteen.
But I'm saying, if you said six through twelve, and then the leadership committee would look at and make the recommendation next spring as to what grade levels to implement? I'm just throwing that out there.
That would be more money, would it not? Because we have grades four through eight, that's what, five, four, five, six, seven, eight? And then if we do six, twelve, that's two additional years.
I don't think, Brian, I don't think, you're not saying six to twelve at one time.
No.
You're just saying approval for ages from grade sixty twelve.
Instead of saying K twelve right away, six through twelve, and then the leadership committee would make the recommendation as they do all the planning to where you would implement either middle school or high school?
And I think at that time, during that time, there'd need to be a really good evaluation of, you know, financials simultaneously.
Right, I agree.
Karen, you're comfortable with this though going forward?
I think she looks very comfortable.
But we don't, I mean, but we've all heard, I mean-
Karen, do you have, do you have any apprehension, like, would there be any new data that you could get in the next year in terms of the impact of the Caterpillar layoffs? I mean, was there-
Not that we can't, not that we can't-
And we hear more coming. You all hear more coming.
If we get to that point, and the Caterpillar has those impacts, that's going to be the conversation that's going to happen with the board is, can we still do this? Where are, where do we put the money that we have? Where, you know what I mean? That's, so if those happen, we're not committed, there's no money committed until every year. Or by the time the money's committed, the money is committed, we pretty, we pretty much know, because it's local property taxes that we're counting on. Not the state who can tell us in three years down the road what they're going to do. But if we're looking at it every year, we're allocating the money every year and voting every year, that, yep, this is what we're going to do next year for the rollout. We're only making that commitment for that one year. And then the next year, we make the commitment for the, the following, you know, for the next part of rollout. And-
Right.
So I'm not worried about it from the financial standpoint, because we are able to stop it, we have to.
And then the, the detailed implementation plan, I think, can be tweaked.
Absolutely.
But I, I think we are already behind. So I don't, I don't want to delay this program, so, you know, start as we plan this moving forward. But, but details can be, can be adjusted as we go.
So, so Paul, you're comfortable with K through twelve?
Yep.
Brian?
Um, I would be more comfortable with the six through twelve. Have the leadership committee do the planning, come back to us with the measurables, um, and make the recommendation as to where to implement that, either the first year, um, as long as all that's in place. They would make the recommendation to either go forward in the high school or the middle school. And then we'll see where it goes from there, what the economy looks like. Maybe some more data's out there, K through five, I don't know. But I think it's, would be a good start.
Teresa?
I would say K through twelve, simply because we're going to look at this throughout an entire year. I think we should look at the whole as we're doing it, because, to see if there's data. I would, I would choose K to twelve.
I'm, I'm personally comfortable, just because Karen has done so much diligence financially, and the fact that we're stopping every year, and we're voting every single year on the budget. And if there ever is a snag of E A V drops to one percent, then, then absolutely, we're putting everything, we're putting everything to pause. I mean, so it doesn't matter, you're, you're in fourth grade, or you're here in eighth grade or high school. We would pause everything, of course, protect the district. Um, so I'm in favor of K through twelve.
I agree.
I, I think that there's consensus with looking this year from K to twelve. And if fiscally, it's more responsible to do six through twelve, that's fine. I'm not sure what the incremental savings would really be. And when we're looking at less than one percent of the overall budget to begin with, it's not a complete wash with the technology fund that we have, but it's still less than one percent. Um, it sounds like there's huge success stories at the elementary level that offset, you know, the initial concerns about screen time. I think, um, we've got the unanimous support of the building principals at the elementary level. Um, you have teachers that have stepped up, you know, and took on the challenge of doing the pilot program, who said initially that they were skeptical and pessimistic. They did a great job really rounding out the one to one presentation last month, really bringing that written presentation to life. And all of the concerns that I had, you addressed, and, and you came back again tonight, which just shows your professionalism and, and passion for what this can do in the classroom. And then the curriculum director worked on it, you worked on it with the curriculum director. Before that, started in twenty thirteen, you've got a leadership team with great expertise. You've got assistant superintendent, superintendent, you've got the regional superintendent. I mean, the decades upon decades of expertise and education and experience that, you know, that all of you have, both in the district and then even Morton superintendent and Prince, Princeville. I find it really incredibly hard- I find it really incredibly hard to impose my opinion about my concerns sitting on the board. Um, so I think it's great that we're taking it slow. We've already done the pilot, you guys developed that. Seems like it was a resounding success. Um, we've done a lot of, you know, studies. Maybe there isn't research out there that says that this improves test scores, but that's not what we're here all about. We want to enhance their education and develop them to their maximum ability. And and that's our mission at Dunlap. So I think this is a step forward that is a real positive one, and I don't think the financial risk is there. And there are the safeguards there to to put the stops on it. But I really think it's a positive program, you know, you guys have done a fantastic job. Sorry, that went a long time, but I was just waiting to hear everybody's input before I gave my opinion.
So you're okay K through twelve?
I am, given, you know, the year to study.
Right, and every year we're stopping, right away.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, Karen?
Yeah, I, um, I could maybe go along with what Brian said. Um, if it were, it would depend on the wording. I could, I couldn't support a, the way it's worded now, three-year rollout plan. Um, I would like it to be approved, you know, each year with much more public comment, much more analysis, uh, data. I'd like to see some, I'd like to see the analysis that was maybe done earlier on, what are the other ways you can spend this money? And is it better for the students in terms of improving student performance? Um, so, you know, I have, I have, so I would maybe go along with Brian's wording, um, depending on what it was.
Okay, well, the maybe is now.
Right, okay, well, I'd have to, I mean, I'd just like to see it up on the board or, you know, type it out some.
So I think that we're not saying.
This is what I would propose, okay? Um, I, I would say that, you know, it's important that we have board consensus, right? Because this is a big effort and I appreciate what you said, Paul, about, you know, it's time to move ahead, we're already behind. So I don't, I don't think anybody wants to delay. So I think that's a good thing, right? I think we all feel it's important.
No, I'd be for delaying.
Okay, well, I think the majority of the board does want to.
Okay, okay, well, I just want to say there's one.
People feel we need to move ahead and so, uh, as trying to work as a board for consensus over the last few weeks, right? There's been many phone calls, we've tried to compromise. The initial plan was for K through twelve to read that way and to be implemented at fourth through eighth grade, moving into high school and then on table before. Um, Brian, you're comfortable with six to twelve? And because we're stopping every year anyway, if it would bring board consensus for us to get an agreement tonight, that everybody feels that this initiative for the one-to-one is important enough for us to approve as a board, going forward with with grades six through twelve. Okay, which will give us a year of professional development, a year of committee work to, um, uh, come up with any other, answer any other questions and also determine what the implementation process will be with Heather and the, and the team, one-to-one committee. And this would also give us the chance for that team to determine the implementation of those first two years within those grade groups, six through twelve. Um, with.
And then that leadership committee would also continue to evaluate the K through five.
Yeah, you could run out.
Right, we would have to stop.
And they, you know, and it would just be a constant, you know, every, they're looking at it all the time and see what's out there, and that would be an additional step.
Right, I mean, that, that's one way to look at it, uh, to go about it. I mean, you know, but because we would like to have board consensus, because that is important, more important. And we, you know, we want to make sure all the questions are answered, and it is important. And I do appreciate everybody's time and effort, but we, you know, we do need to move ahead. And it's important to the staff, all the time that they've invested, and without the agreement to move forward, I mean, the professional development can't even take place in August.
We probably would, I don't know what we would do with our K five teachers, starting in August, if we did not know that we were going to go forward with this. That would be a better question for Heather. I mean, it would be hard for me to say to the staff, I need you to do X, Y, and Z, but I can't tell you a year from now, you're going to have support to move forward. I, I just, I don't.
Well, I think the long-term plan is to head in that direction, however, we don't know what the bottom could fall in the county, there could be recession, there were things. So, I mean, professionally, they can get developed, we are heading that path. We just don't know definitively that we can actually get there.
I think that's a better question for Heather, because she may have some other priorities that she would want to talk to the board with, that there might be some other things that K five would want to work on that would be higher. I mean, that's, I think that's a whole other discussion if that's where we're at.
But they still have iPads and they still have Chromebooks, so you still need to develop.
Sure, but that's not very limited.
You know, they, and if we're going to roll it down.
I think our professional development will have to look very differently next year.
And you still have pilots?
We do, and we would have to make a decision on what we're doing with that without having a full-fledged commitment to it.
Because it's not equitable throughout the buildings, you know, and so, yes, we do have iPads and we do have Chromebooks, but it's, it's, it's very different in each building, so we would need to look at that. Hannah, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just kidding. And one of the reasons when we were considering plans for rollouts, that we started the four through eight is because those students are already most prepared, because of the different ratios of Chromebooks that very heavy buildings. Within that presentation, um, even in May, there was a table that showed the ratio of Chromebooks to students in each building. And the lowest ratio was now all the elementary schools. Um, I think, I think the elementary schools are all about one to three already. Before I started this pilot, two years before, I already had my Chromebooks with my students. They've been using them before this pilot even came into my forehead. And that's kind of the reason we landed on starting four, three, because these students have already been using them, they've already been prepared for them. And that's why we chose that as the ultimate rollout plan. Because the high school, if you look at their ratio, it's almost that those students don't have access to Chromebooks as elementary students do. See, we give them the Chromebook to a student, maybe with never touched one in the entire physical career yet. So that's kind of where we landed on that as far as the rollout.
I, I see, in the technologies, just like, just very similar to, you know, sports or art or music and things. K through five, I think that may be the very critical time that they, they learn this, that that could be higher input, you know, impact on their, the rest of their, their life. So and then I think, so if we do not do the K through five, how much we say, I think, I think you answered the question before, is that hundred fifty thousand dollars?
I don't think we're saying not to do, not, I don't think we're anyone saying, don't do K through five. It's just that your first phases, I'm just saying your first phases initially are going to be the, the, either the middle school or the high school. And that's still, that doesn't really hit, I know you're hitting fourth grade, but doesn't hit till nineteen and twenty anyway.
So then the whole program is not really changed, just the way we started implementing that?
So, I mean, so I guess.
But then eventually K through third, then, why is it, why are you saying differently then?
Well, because we're, we're trying to, I'm, I'm trying to.
We're trying to build consensus.
And we're trying to move this forward.
We're trying to be.
So eventually votes, so is that what you consent, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
You know, if we could put up on the board, I mean, if everybody else is willing to go along with Brian's, I'd just like to see the wording, if we could put it up on the screen or something.
But, I guess.
If others aren't willing, then don't worry about it.
Yeah, and I guess that the bigger issue, to what Lisa was saying, is that we need commitment K through twelve. Even if we're uncomfortable at this point with the implementation, we still need commitment as a board to give the staff and administration the power to start to develop and move this initiative forward. And so I guess, and I know that's.
But it's the professional development that's going to happen anyway. With this current plan, nothing, it would still be that the intention is to do the K through five. So I, I guess I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I mean, if they have Chromebooks already and they're using, and they have a higher ratio.
But I don't think anybody's saying we're taking it out the table, it's just that it's implemented in nineteen, twenty anyway. The fourth grade is the difference, right?
Well, you're also reallocating your iPads to K one and seventeen, eighteen.
But I'm talking about the professional development side of things.
Right, but what I'm saying is if we're not going to do this K twelve, we wouldn't be reallocating.
I didn't, but I didn't say that. I'm, right away, you're not going to implement a K twelve anyway, right away.
Right.
Right.
But you got a professional develop, you have this opportunity to have everybody do professional development in the next year, right? Everybody goes in. So I think that's kind of where we're at. We're just saying that it might be high school, it might be later on that that gets implemented, but I, I don't see where you're going with this.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I don't know if, I know, I know you're concerned about the wording, right? And I think the, the initial, um, intent is there. For the most majority of the board, K through twelve is the intent for this to roll completely through. Now, the timing is, I think, where the, where there's the majority of the struggle, is where you start and how it gets rolled out. So I think that those are the logistical things, and we don't need to be down in the weeds really getting into that, right? We need to approve the implementation of the one-to-one process. And if that's K through twelve, I mean, if people want assurance that it's not going to start kindergarten to fourth grade, maybe we can have the wording state that, you know, the board is approving the one-to-one initiative for K through twelve professional development with the initial rollout being grade six through twelve. I mean, is that, I mean, can we, is it in the words? I mean, I, I don't know where the theory is really, because I think we're all saying the same things. I mean, if, if that committee is the one who's making the decision, with all those great minds working together, I think I would give them the trust to say, you've thought it out, you've, you've done the due diligence, you tell us how you're going to implement this procedure. We're just giving you the, you know, the authority to go ahead and do that. So I, I know we're struggling with words here, I just don't see how important they are at the end of the day, if we're really going to support this and move forward. So, but it, but if it makes, if it builds consensus and it makes people feel better, we can word it such that it will be a K through twelve initiative. However, the professional development will start K through twelve, moving on with the, the two, second two-year phase, initial rollout being grade six through twelve. I mean, it gets kind of crazy with the words, but it get, does that get people where they feel that they're comfortable?
I don't think.
I mean.
I have a comment, and, and Cheryl, you've made a great point, I was thinking the same thing. And Ally, maybe you can, um, talk to this too. We have kids with greater needs coming into the district, we do at all times. And these success stories, and, and, you know, I know, because I had a child that had a disability as well. A lot of times, these things help kids come out, and I know several teachers had said that as well, that these help students, it helps them write, it helps them do different things. So from my perspective, and maybe you can comment on that, Ally?
Absolutely, and, um, I think that's, that's one of the things that our district is lacking well. Um, I attended a conference, I think probably all of ours, in Minnesota this fall, learned a tremendous amount of information about technology and how we can accommodate and modify kids for students with needs, for those of what their needs are. And you'll see some teachers to give them a little snippet of information. I mean, I learned so much, you can't possibly guide them all at once, but it's amazing. Very little things that you can do when you put technology in students' hands, that they, they're now have power to keep up with their classmates if they cannot write well, if they cannot speak well, if they cannot do things of that sort. And then these devices to have in hand of all of these students would be a tremendous, uh, benefit to, to all students, but I think most especially to those students with needs, whatever those needs could be. I really did talk to Heather about students from my Lysco's classes. Some of those students have their own special-made devices, their iPads and sheets for students that are not, um, don't have verbal communication or their, you know, other, other types of switches and things for those low-income kids. But for the majority of our special education students in the district, they need these devices truly, K through twelve. It, it would make a tremendous impact on that and their ability to participate in the classes at all, really.
You know, I'd hope that you're using these devices for those students regardless of what the wording is. And I had a parent.
If you have it, yeah.
I'm always available. I have a parent call, and she said, she, she's actually against devices, but her kids, she has two, I think, they have reading problems in the elementary school, so they put a program on the device that comes home, and she's seen benefit from that. So you are doing it.
Right, when they're available.
How about this, how about approve six to twelve and develop a comprehensive plan and proposal through K through five? That would be presented in the year two thousand, you could say two thousand and eighteen, that the leadership committee would do that, does that?
What are we, what are you looking for? I guess that's different than what we have.
I think he's just trying to get.
Let's just go with it. And instead of.
Yeah, I mean, if it has K through five, you're not going to get me, so.
Right.
But I'm saying in the comprehensive proposal and the plan, that shows how that's going to be, how we could possibly do that and bring that to the board.
I mean, I'd, I'd be okay with an analysis of it, but I wouldn't be okay with approving it.
Oh, no, okay, no, I'm just saying in a comprehensive plan and proposal to the board, doesn't say if they approve it.
Oh, okay.
For K through five, as that committee, leadership committee looks at.
An implementation of six through twelve, um, that, and then the committee would decide what, where, what grades it would start and the details and do data analysis.
And do the plan for the K through five.
And do the plan for the K through.
But I think that's what our one-to-one committee's already done, I guess. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but.
I know, but.
I, I think we're based on, I would, I would know enough to define the six to twelve is the right go first, you know, I, I.
I don't know if there's enough data out there to do man, to look at any of it, but, I mean, as far as where you start first, I don't think the data's out there.
Well, and I, I, but we do know that that's not what the committee initially recommended.
I could say that committee out there knows a lot.
And we appreciate the committee's work, by the way.
Right, I do too.
But, I mean, we're cautiously optimistic some of us, and we're trying to, trying to get.
So are there, is there six people that agree to the K through twelve? Just the initiative?
What's the difference if it's, if it said how Lisa wants it, or if it said how Brian wants it? What's if it, if everyone?
I think it, they need clear directions so that they can move forward.
We're looking for directions.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. And the big, and, and the big thing about it is that, and this is, this, to me, there's been significant compromise, right? And we worked this, and we worked this, and we worked this, and we tried to bring everybody on board, I mean, honestly. And people bent over backwards trying to make everybody comfortable with, you know, what's taking place. I mean, at the end of the day, we, we either, you know, you've given the direction, we're going to prove it or not, right? And, and, and I, I appreciate trying to build consensus and appreciate all your efforts, Brian, and I know there's been a lot of work that's taking place behind the scenes. Um, I just, I don't know, and I know we wanted to pause, and sure, we could pause and have a special meeting, I don't know, maybe in a week. I know some people are traveling, it's going to be tough to get everybody together in the middle of the summer, but I don't know what another week is going to gain us, quite honestly. I think Karen's done an excellent job of answering, you know, hundreds of questions.
Heather?
Heather's done an excellent job of answering hundreds of questions, you know.
But I, I think we're, I think we're close, are we not?
I, I mean, it depends on how many others.
You're saying you're never going to go K five?
I mean, I would go with a plan to analyze and propose something for K five, but I wouldn't be for approval of K five.
But with the intent.
But that's what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I think what we, I think where you have to be careful is our strategic plan says we need equitable technology at all grade levels. So whether K five looks exactly like it does in the, in the plan that all of these guys have worked a year or more on putting together, I can't say that that's necessarily what it would look like. But I, I think it's important to take that expertise. But we need the commitment for K twelve so that we can move forward. Otherwise, the buy-in of all of those elementary teachers that are working, that have put all of this time and effort and all of, you know, and their expertise. They're wonderful professionals that care about kids, but we can't, why would they continue to pilot and to learn and transform their curriculum into something that they're never going to have any hope of having in their classroom?
But, but the thing is, if it's a, if we are successful at either middle school implementing this and high school, we'd be foolish not to go that way. I'm just saying, it's, this depends on how we roll it and how well we do with that. And I think in this stuff, in three years out or two years out, we're rolling it out there, I think that, you know, if we do a good job, I don't think anybody's going to say.
They're already using it, right?
But those would have to be taken away and put to the high school.
And I think that's what we're saying is, if we do, if instead of, if, if you look at it and you do the kids, uh, the younger kids a little bit later in the implementation, not to say that they're not going to get it, it just perhaps it's layered toward.
All the growing pains, how are we doing, because everything newly implemented, you know, I've been involved with lots of I T stuff, and it's a, it's a big undertaking.
Right, and so you're okay with that. He's not saying we're not going to do something K five, it's just let's make sure that we're doing what's the absolute best for the kids K five. And let's have, you know, and be able to show that. But I think you're, I, I think where the concern is, I don't know that Karen's ever going to be too big for K five. Well, we have a year to.
Oh, you will, you're, you're open to it.
I mean, I would consider it at some point, uh, but it's not likely, I mean.
And, and this, this is the other thing.
But if data comes out in a year's time that shows this is beneficial.
Well, exactly, I mean, I guess there could be something that could change my mind.
And this, and this, my, my thing is that this, we're not, we're not, you're not deciding tonight, right? You're going to have a chance every year to vote on this, right? So we're voting to go ahead with the pro, with the process, but that's still pending, you know, financial forecasts don't change, you can look at the data every year. I mean, you've got multiple years before that's even going to take place. And it is not as if you're not going to ever get a chance to say, hey, wait a minute, we're at the point of K through two, three, through third grade, I'm not convinced I'm going to be a no, because you're going to vote every single year.
Well, why can't we just vote for the first year?
Well, because they need to have direction for multiple years to start rolling it out. And professional development.
It's, it's vote for the framework to say, we're going to roll out one-to-one technology, K twelve in some fashion, because you can't roll, you can't do true professional development for all twelve grade levels if K five is never going to have one-to-one. It would be different professional development.
Well, nobody's saying that.
So that's not to say, then.
We're not saying that.
And that's not what we, and that's what I'm saying.
We're not saying it's never going to happen in K two or K five.
But we have to give them a little bit of, uh, a timeline. But we have to give them a little bit of, uh, a timeline. I can't say to the teachers, because in August, Heather and I are going to stand up in front of the teachers and go through this with them one more time as to what the next year's going to look like. And, and I know our teachers are very hardworking and they're very supportive, but it's a lot of work and it's a lot of extra work. And so, there has to be a lot of buy-in from them, and it's going to be hard for me to stand up there in August and say, this is what we're going to do this year, but you may, we don't know when you're going to get your devices. It may be four years, it may be three years, it may be next year. That's why we wanted to, to approve the rollout so that we could at least give them a timeline.
Well, yeah, you've got a three-year rollout, right? Seventeen, eight, so you, you basically have three buckets of students of what we're talking about. So, I'm trying to figure out, can we get that language? Karen, can we get you on board?
Yeah, I, I think you probably, I think you should just go ahead with your language and let me go know. Because I don't think we're going to get there. I mean, I, I think we could just talk about it.
That's what I listened from Karen and Brian. I don't, I don't think, uh, your proposed way, we're not mitigating any risk. Because we're going to go through the same, same, same voting process anyway, so.
I'm, I'm trying to build consensus.
I know, I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's the only purpose of it. I, I, I think the outcome will be the, I think it's the same. And then after one year, collecting more information and, I think, I think their proposal will be the same. So, so I don't think this will go any, anything much differently different.
So, there's a possibility then on the year seventeen, eighteen, that, that we all will come back or some of you would come back and say, okay, we're just going to do grades K through six or K through five. Can we see a writing, can we see writing on this? Because I want to know what we're, I need to see what we're talking about.
Yeah, because I think if you say K through twelve, the board, the leadership committee can then decide where you implement it on.
Right.
And I think that's the concern of so on.
Well, but I mean, but they've already given us their, their implement, their, their proposed implementation plan, and we've got a whole year where people are going to sit on that committee. And if they feel that there's a strong need to make adjustment, they're going to be sitting at that table. And so, they'll have a voice. And so, that's where you have to speak up. You have to speak up during the process, right? You can't wait two weeks before a vote and then we have, you know, mass chaos. I mean, this has been taking place since twenty thirteen, I guess, and that's where some of the.
Well, I know, but I mean, our curriculum chair is right here too.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, that's, I, I want to see her embrace the initiative.
I agree.
However, however the process, you know, whatever, but our curriculum chair, to me, seems very important that she should be behind us.
Well, I'm completely in agreement with how Brian phrased it.
So, so Beth, you were the curriculum chair, so.
Yeah, I just said I would, you know, how Brian phrased it. I'm completely with that. I think that's, I just, I'm concerned about the, right now, the, the K four really, because I told Heather I could do five. But Karen started off on that one, and Brian, I don't know if he would go five, but if we want to do six. We need, can we see this, please? Can we see what we're, where the language is so we can stay on track, I guess?
I, I don't know where we're at.
So much everywhere, I have no idea where we're at.
The, the, the language, the initial language was to prove the three-year rollout is presented in the May Board Education Meeting starting in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Um, if we want to make any adjustments to that, that's, that's where we've been going around and around. And, uh, you know, I guess I'm just struggling with having four members who are more than ready to go and making adjustments that are still not going to bring us consensus. So, if there's a way to make this work very soon, we can do that.
Right.
But o- other than that, I think we, we need to move on.
Karen, do you have another version you want to share or no?
No.
So, the deal, you know, we really, you know, in the past, we were pulled into this conversation way before even the presentation. And so, that's why all these questions are coming up all of a sudden, because, you know, we, we had the presentation. We had family surgery, I was sick, I couldn't come, and, and for two weeks, you know? So, we started looking at this, and then we started, you know, asking all these questions. So, that's, that's where we are right now.
Right, and I appreciate that, but we started informing the board, I believe, in, was it August of?
Informed, but not engaged. Um, so I would, I am for what Brian, I'm all for what Brian said. I'm all for K twelve, but I, I don't, I want to kind of roll it, I'm for kind of a backward rollout, six through, or twelve through six, and then we look at that and slowly move it down.
But that's what they're going to determine during this year timeframe, what that rollout should be, and come to us with a recommendation. I just don't feel comfortable eliminating the K through five.
We don't want to eliminate.
That.
And that's, you, you, you're going to be on that committee, so you'll be at that table. You'll be attending every single meeting, and so, there's no way you're going to get left out of anything, because you'll be, you'll have a seat at that table. And so, before anything comes back to the board for implementation, you will have had a say in that. So, I, is approving K and twelve is not saying that, okay, you're approving kindergarten start tomorrow. That's saying that we're giving approval for this process to begin, and all those grades are going to be considered.
Right.
Then the committee will, will go through that effort, and initially, it was four through eight and then high school, and then, so, I mean, it's still seven years away.
I don't see a difference in your, I mean, I, you're, the way you worded it and the way you worded it, I, I don't, I don't really understand the difference.
Well, isn't that good? Because if you're okay with that, then I think.
Well, I mean, you probably need to just, I think that's, and I think if we can, I don't know how somebody needs to draft these motions or somebody makes a motion with some language and then we react.
What is the current motion? Can we?
Well, I know what the current, I think we know what the current motion is.
Maybe we can start there and tweak it.
Absolutely, and that, that's what, that's all we want to do, and it's their day. And so, if people are okay with trusting that committee can carry this forward, you finally need to change it, quite honestly.
See what that says.
Uh, to approve the three-year rollout plan as presented, but then as presented with the, what we saw in the May Board Meeting, four through eight, the high school and so on. As presented at the May Board, uh, Board of Education Meeting starting in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. The Board will vote on this each year until two thousand nineteen, twenty school year begins. The Board of Education will reevaluate the financial outlook and prioritize what is best for the district each year. I mean, it doesn't get much bigger than that. I mean, it, it just, it, it speaks to the process, but when it says as presented, then that's back to the four through eight, the high school. But all of that is going to be tweaked, reevaluated, looked at. The committee's going to work on the implementation. So, that's where we can have some say, say or buy-in if there's any, you know, any, uh, questions or confusion at that point, because you've got a whole year before any of this goes out. So, I mean, I think it's pretty clean if you want to move the presented, as presented at the May Board Meeting and, and implement something there. We can, we can say as, as, you know, as, as the committee, you know, works to, to implement. Or we can word it to where it's based back on the committee.
What if you, what if the finances showed or, or something showed that you wanted to slow it down? So, that saying it's a three-year rollout, why would you want to limit it to three? I mean, or constrain the language to be so specific?
Yeah, I think that's just the way it was, the way we have a plan.
That's to get, get it done.
And I mean, if you want to just say the rollout, if three is hurting it, we can just say the rollout.
Okay.
I mean, that, I don't think that's going to make or break the, the, you know, motion. So, if we remove the three, if that helps anyone, and instead of saying as presented at the May Board Meeting, as presented by the, you know, the one-to-one initiative committee, does that?
And you need to take out, approve the three and then year, because otherwise it says the year rollout.
Right, yeah, so, okay, year. So, does that, does that help the comfort level of, of the?
So, are you taking out as presented at the May Board Meeting?
Yep.
Okay. And what is it being replaced with, or is it not being replaced?
Um, I think we can replace it with, um, as something, we want to, we want to leave it to the committee. So, you know, it's, it's going to be Heather's part of the team, and people that put all the time in. We'll add a couple of board members to it.
And you don't want to have it come back to the board?
Well, I think we need to.
Yeah, it'll always come back to the board.
Oh, okay, so.
Be presented to the board with a recommendation.
So, how come K twelve wasn't even included in that if it was that important?
Because it was as presented.
As presented, it was K twelve.
As presented was K twelve.
Okay, okay.
As a recommendation.
So, so are we, um, are we moving forward with looking at move to approve the rollout plan? And I don't know if we're going to leave as presented by the one-to-one initiative.
Are we recording this?
No, we were. We were, the device of the rollouts. But now, when you say rollout plan, it can be, well, when you say rollout plan, it's going to be as the one-to-one initiative committee.
Proposals.
But I guess I'm, and we can do that, but I guess we're just concerned from an administrative standpoint what we tell the teachers in August. Should we just tell them that? I guess we're just, I guess maybe I'm just still a little confused.
Maybe tell them we're doing top-down instead of bottom-up?
I prefer not to.
Yeah, I think.
We need to meet them.
If we try to change something after year right on, it's a real grading confusion.
It's true, yeah.
So, why don't we, why don't we just go with this? And then leave the room, you know, to, to amend this recommendation if there is a compelling reason, if they come up with different data and then resort, and then, then every year you can, you can adapt.
I agree.
Every year to having a easy EK or a six and, and. I would, I would suggest just, just go for it, or otherwise you may create, um, yeah, more, more confusion and.
Lack of direction.
Yeah, I'll call.
You will, you will not succeed as a start.
Well, we, we, we're trying not to have a, um, a complete flip to. I mean, we're, we're trying to work towards consensus.
Try to work.
I mean, you know.
And how many do we have that are willing to vote for it as is, I guess? Where are we at with the vote?
As presented?
As presented.
As presented.
The original one.
There is a one. So, undo that. Are we four, three, five, two, six, one?
The original proposal, you mean? Going back to the original one? That was a five through, four through whatever.
Four through eight.
I'm a no on that.
I'm a no on that.
What, K through twelve?
No, that, that can be, that, that can be changed, right? That was the recommendation. I don't think we're proving that recommendation today. That was a recommendation, right? And then the recommendation, and there's one year buffer. Recommendation is implemented four to eight through eight from two thousand seventeen. So, still we have one year to tweaking.
We're approving to move forward.
And then, yeah, and then you're going to approve right here after today, right? To, to two thousand seventeen in the plan. So, you have, you have opportunity to change, maybe from today.
They're going to take the year to review.
I mean, we're getting caught up, we're getting caught up in words and language. I mean, I think everybody's intending the same, but, um. And I, I still don't know what the theory is, because we're approving it every single year. So, I just, that, that, I don't understand where's the fear. We definitely, you know, program one, approval for three years, and we're never going to be visiting. Then I can understand.
I mean, even the fourth grade will be back to talk about it in the spring to make sure that's, to get approval.
But, I mean, if that's the case, then you could just approve it one year at a time. I mean, if that were the case.
The vision, vision you for going for it, you can't really.
I, well, I understand that, and so, that's why I think they want, that, that's why I think you all want it worded this way, but it, it is a vision, and so, I wouldn't be for the, for the vision of the plan. You know what I mean? The K through five. And I'm not going to, you know, I might be upset about it. I'm, I'm okay with, you know, I'm okay with you guys.
We can, we can approve one year. Then I think that because of the plan is assuming three years, so even if you're approving the one, the first year, the content we're approving is kind of having the assumption that the second year, third year, and the fourth year, because I think they need to select the teacher to, to educate and where they selecting the teacher from, for example, right? So, even if you, even if you do one year, I think there's all the nuance behind it is the, pushing the whole thing.
Um, I wish that, I wish it was that easy. I just think that's the, um, the buy-in, you know? You can, there's fear that the buy-in may not be there, right?
Don, do we need to write it, and, and maybe, um, Lisa, you can confirm this. Do we need to write it as a three-year rollout? Or can we make the motion to move forward with the one-on-one initiative? Something like that with a recommendation within the next year to the board for the initial phase, gen one, gen two, gen three, moving forward.
Could you just take out three year and just say rollout plan?
Right, one-to-one.
Because this is going to be in generations.
And it may change, is the thing, because.
Right.
You're, the rollout plan as presented right now is this, but as the committee evolves, it may come back very differently. And again, we're going to look at the finances a year from now. And so, we're still going to have the opportunity to vote on the Chromebooks or whatever in the spring. And so, really what we're, all we're really asking for is the board to say, yes.
Move forward.
K twelve looks great, move forward, and send it back to the committee. Teachers, go get your staff development. Come back with another plan with the district leadership team, and let's keep moving forward instead of stalling.
Are you good with that? Okay, yeah, I, I think that would work.
Okay.
I think she's, you're on board, are you on board?
Brian?
Okay, all right, so, and you got to reread that now, because you changed it like thirty times, but okay. We're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion, we're going to move forward to approve the one-to-one technology implementation plan now. That motion is going to be, and I'm going to ask somebody to, to.
Wait, well, I thought you were.
Did you went to the other?
I thought we were going to, are we not doing this?
Just pick off the three years.
I just picked out three years.
Right, there would be.
Teresa suggested move to approve the one-to-one.
To, move to move forward with the one-on-one. I think, I don't know that we need the school years in here. I mean, twenty seventeen, eighteen, I don't know, do we need that in there? Because during that timeframe, during the next year, we're going to have the committee, right, to understand what we're going to do in the next year. You guys could come back to us and we could say absolutely not, right? So, it, it just depends. Because it budgetary constraints, whatever it might be, right?
Two thousand sixteen, right? Starting in the two thousand sixteen.
Is the planning and the professional development.
The whole initiative really starts sixteen.
Right.
Right, right.
What about move to approve the one-to-one initiative, um, framework? With the sixteen to seventeen, the sixteen to seventeen school year.
And we, do you want to add some language in that talks about the committee and all that kind of stuff?
We're getting into.
I think we're proving it, and that is how it's going to be handled.
Yeah, exactly. To move forward with the one-to-one initiative with a recommendation within a year from, something like that.
Um, yeah, starting twenty sixteen, seventeen, but that'll be the initial.
Starting? Oh, so I go back there? Do, do you?
Oh, no, yeah, I think we can keep going, starting twenty sixteen, seventeen, because I think we're going to get rid of all the rollout, because that'll be determined by the committee.
Yes, because that's not going to be.
So, do we put eight?
That's, I think.
Do you need to take out the word May?
School year.
Or if you just do as presented?
Yeah. As presented.
Move to approve the one-to-one initiative starting in the sixteen, seventeen school year as presented.
As presented when?
Yeah, you don't have to put that in there, otherwise it's presented where?
Well, normally that's, we just say as presented when we do motions, I mean, so.
As presented at this meeting?
Yes, I think so.
You can do this meeting.
At this meeting, yeah.
That's what we, yeah.
Would you mediate?
Wouldn't have done it, ma.
So, that means K through twelve?
Yeah, intention is still.
Yes, okay. Where we started.
And then you can take out the remainder of that sentence and then leave the following sentence. Meeting, and take this out?
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then you can have the board will vote on this each year.
Right.
And period? Mm-hmm, and so, yeah, that would be it.
And take the rest of it out?
Uh, well, yeah.
After we've got presented that to do twenty fifteen's Board of Education meeting, period, take out rollout plan, take out that whole rest of that sentence.
One, go up one, yeah, I'm sorry, meaning.
Go up one, go start with the whole, and highlight all the way down.
Period here?
Yeah.
Period there, and then highlight all of that down to the twenty seven, eighteen school year, just take all of that out.
Mm-hmm. There you go, and then the next sentence, that's good.
Everybody okay with that?
So, I'm, I'm not gonna do this.
So, it gives us the opportunity every year to go, due to finances, which was important, I mean, that was an important concern of everybody's, I think.
Yes.
Correct.
All right, everybody comfortable with that? Everybody's okay?
Except Karen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's a try.
We did a try.
No, I appreciate you trying, it was very nice.
Selective effort.
All right, um, I ask for a motion to approve the one-to-one technology implementation, implementation plan as seen on the screen, someone can do that.
I move to approve the one-to-one initiative starting in the sixteen, seventeen school year as presented at the June fifteenth, twenty sixteen Board of Education meeting. The board will vote on this each year until the twenty, that's what it's called. The nineteen, twenty school year has begun. The Board of Education will reevaluate the financial outlook and prioritize what is best for the district each year.
I second.
Thank you, Beth, thank you, Teresa, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Park. Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Posman.
Aye.
Disharum.
No.
Posthauser.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you all. I know, I know it was tough and I'm sorry that you guys had to sit through all that, but it's really important that we, we, we did try to move, move on tonight. So, I appreciate everybody's effort and all your hard work and, and the thoughtful questions, and thank you to Karen and the whole team. Um, moving on now to our next item, we had, was, were there any questions on the amended budget for the two thousand fifteen school year? When I ask for a motion to approve the.
Which budget is that, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Is that the one with just the little technical changes?
Yeah, okay, yes.
Uh, Karen, yep.
Okay, no, I didn't have.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, can we please have a motion to approve the amended budget for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year?
I move to approve the amended budget for the twenty fifteen, sixteen school year.
Second.
All right, thank you, Karen, thank you, Cheryl, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Posman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Posthauser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Okay, this concludes the action items, second of the meeting, and we're now moving to closed session. Can I please have a motion to adjourn the closed session?
I move to adjourn to a closed session. Vote for the following purposes stated in the open meetings. One, intruders disciplinary cases. Two, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. And, three, the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully proposed.
I second.
All right, thank you, Beth, and thank you, Teresa, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Posman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Posthauser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
All right. You're doing much more.
Presentation now.
I thought she was giving a presentation.
Right, she's just saying now.
And there is people freakonomics out of that one.
Oh, that I know.
Okay, we've got a couple of action items, everybody, you ready? We need a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda for two thousand sixteen, sixteen?
I move to approve the human resources consent agenda for the fifteen, sixteen school year as presented.
I second, oh.
All right, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, Paul, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Posman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Posthauser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to approve the human resources consent agenda for two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
I move to approve the human resources consent agenda for the sixteen, seventeen as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl, thank you, Karen, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Disharum.
Aye.
Posthauser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Posman.
Aye. I ask for a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
I move to approve the closed session minutes for the regular board meeting in May seventeen, twenty sixteen. Second.
Okay, thank you, Teresa, thank you, Karen, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Posthauser.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zawin.
Aye.
Lou.
Aye.
Posman.
Aye.
Disharum.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. All right, uh, any requests for agenda items for future board meetings?
Well, the valedictorian thing that needs to be.
Is that on already, uh?
It's on our, we have a list in the, I know it's on my list, but it's not on a future.
Okay.
You just mean if the test has changed?
If it, if, if it does.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine.
What about any further developments on, uh, pool concepts? Is that something, or when do you think that would question?
Uh, we're probably ready to, we have a meeting in August.
Okay.
What was your question, Brian, I didn't hear, sorry.
Um, for future agenda items, was any, um, potential pool alternatives? But.
We'll probably have something in September at the facility report, maybe.
September, yeah, yeah.
I believe our meeting is in, end of August.